Hello and welcome. This is the regular session of the Town Council, the town of South Kingstown. The time is 7:30 and the date is Monday, April 26th. And could you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, may we have the roll call, please?
Council President Fogarty.
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
Four members present. Councilwoman McAtee is absent.
Thank you, Dale. Well, this evening, before we get into the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, we have been lucky enough to be graced by some of the FEMA representatives who've been working here in the town of South Kingstown. And we have Manny Walker, who's going to be coming up and giving us a few statements on what's been happening in the town. But first off, I'd like to thank everybody from FEMA, from SBA, from all the different divisions that are out there. And I appreciate that you came and responded so quickly to the town of South Kingstown, setting up your site right at the Wakefield Mall parking lot. And I hear that we've been a busy place here in the Wakefield area, a lot of people coming in and, you know, getting their questions answered. So we do appreciate everything that FEMA has done for us. Manny, with that, I'll let you come right up to the podium. Mr. Walker, thank you again.
Thank you. Good evening. We wish to immediately thank everyone, especially the council members, president, vice president, all council members, for allowing us a few minutes to explain our presence and our mission in this great town of South Kingstown. My name is Manuel Walker, and I work for Community Relations of the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Alongside with me tonight, we have other members that are going to be very briefly providing critical information regarding of programs that are available to anyone that may have been affected by the disaster. We have Mr. Bill Kuntz from SBA, Mr. Jamie Shaw, who's the Coordinator for the Hazard Mitigation Program, Jerry Frye from the National Flood Insurance Program, Al Di Pietro, who is a community relations person, staff member. As you all know, we're here with a mission, and it's to assist in any way we can to any person or business that may have been affected by this terrific flooding that caused so many, so much damage here. I will not proceed without thanking Mr. Andrew Noda. He has been invaluable team player in providing and facilitating our work in this town. As you all know, there's a declaration for disaster assistance for the entire state. Anyone that may have been affected, regardless whether there's an individual or a business, can apply and register with FEMA their losses, as long as he or she is a U.S. citizen or lawfully present. There are two key components in this declaration. Every time there's a declaration, they may activate the individual assistance program, which is what I am part of, or the public assistance program that deals with infrastructure. We deal with individual assistance. And what we do with CR, with Community Relation, is that we deploy staff in all affected areas. In this case, Mr. Noda has depicted the most severely impacted, and we go door-to-door, ensuring that anyone that may have been affected call and register their losses. It is of utmost importance that anyone affected do so, because there's only so much window of opportunity of 60 days for anyone affected to call and register. Declaration took place in March 29th, and we'll end promptly on May 28th. Anyone that may have been affected needs to call, we're asking them to call, 1-800-621-3362. Again, 1-800-621-3362. Irrelevant whether you're a homeowner, a renter, a business, whether you're insured, whether you're not insured, you need to call. The process is extremely simple. The call, it's a 10, 15-minute call, but you have to be prepared. How? You have to have readily available your name, Social Security, whether you're a homeowner, if you are a homeowner, you have to have the name of your insurance company, the name of your agent, the policy number readily on hand, a description of the damages, a phone where you can be reached, an alternate phone just in case you cannot be reached there. After that process is complete, the person will be given, or the family, a control number, a registration number that you can use as a follow-up. You may have the possibility of getting any funds if they're due to you, either in the mail or electronically deposited. Have your bank account also readily available for the tele-register. Once you do that, an average of three, four, maybe five at the most, days you will be receiving a phone call from an inspector or a loss verifier saying, "When can we meet?" He will come in with a pound pad computer, he will enter all the information that you provide in terms of damages, he will make his own observations. And the importance of actually having FEMA visit with you is twofold. Sometimes the inspector, with his keen trained eyes, can detect items that you don't even know, foundation, structural damages, mold and mildew. "Oh, no, I am, you know, leave these monies for people that need it, I really..." If there was nothing much, only three, five, six inches of water. Period closes, all of a sudden, two months later, the whole house is infected, mold and mildew, but the application period is closed. So we're actually urging anyone, everyone, that had sustained losses to call and register. Once this happens and he leaves, when I mean he, loss verifier or inspector, the house, you should be anticipating a disposition in the mail in the form of a letter, a check, a combination of both, check your bank account, or, this is an excellent segue, a manila envelope that says SBA. A lot of people say, "Why an SBA? I am not a business." Regardless whether you... It's not only for businesses. Small business is not only for those that have businesses, but also for individuals. And what happens is that once you receive that, FEMA wants to know, because that would be one of your line of defenses, if you have a repayment ability. If not, you will be placed into a grant program. But unless you return that package, we would not know, and we would be sitting waiting for you to act upon it. So it's critical for you to complete it. At this point, I'd like to just say that there are two basic programs in addition to another series of subprograms. One is the Housing Program, which is basically handled by FEMA, and the other one is the ONA Program, which stands for Other Needs Assistance, and that is actually a state program. The Housing Program has to do with temporary housing for either individuals or homeowners. For homeowners, they have a subprogram that's called Rental Repairs. If the owner is uninsured or underinsured, he may receive monies to help repair, rebuild that unit. And also, he may be entitled to actually rent elsewhere until that dwelling is made habitable, safe, sanitary, and habitable, as well also as the renter. Having said that, I want to basically say that it is very, very important to call and register. We cannot stress this enough. We have a disaster recovery center located at the Wakefield Mall in this town. And without much further ado, I'd like to allow some participation of the Small Business Administration person. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to the council and to the townsfolk. And thanks for coming out on such a rainy evening. My name is Bill Kuntz, and I'm a spokesman for the Small Business Administration. And as Manny said, in a disaster, our name is misleading. We make loans to homeowners and renters, businesses of all sizes, private nonprofit organizations. So when you register with FEMA, and that's the first step to dealing with the SBA, you'll be referred to us if you look like someone who might be able to afford a low-interest disaster loan. And we make disaster loans to those folks that have been impacted and have uncompensated losses. You might say, "Well, I have insurance. I don't need to apply with the SBA." As Manny said, three or four months from now, after the deadline to apply, which is May 28th, you may find that, yes, you were wrong. I do have mold behind the wall, in the ceiling. I do have expense that I can't handle or wait. I have a deductible that I didn't think about on my insurance policy. And so we want you to apply for an SBA low-interest disaster loan, even if you don't think you need it, even if you think you don't need it. What's the rate? It's a low-interest rate loan. A homeowner or renter can get a rate as low as 2.625 percent, and will stretch the payments out over 30 years, no matter how small the loan, to make it more affordable. Business owners are eligible for loans as low as 4 percent, again, to 30 years. How much can I get? That depends on the amount of damage you had, and the limit for a homeowner is $200,000 to repair or replace their dwelling. Has to be their primary residence, it can't be a vacation home or a second home. And homeowners and renters can get up to $40,000 for their personal property. That includes a car. Business owners are eligible for two kinds of loans. One is for the business owner that's been flooded, will replace their real estate, their furniture and fixtures, their equipment, their inventory. And then there will be also businesses, there's a business in Cranston, I believe it is, where the little bridge, a footbridge maybe, is no longer available. And folks aren't walking across the bridge to go into the coffee shop, let's say. So there will be businesses that have economic injury. They don't have to be flooded, they just have to be able to say, "I've suffered because of this storm event and the months since, and I've lost my income, and I can't make my bank payment, I can't pay my payroll. We can loan them money as well," again, as low as 4 percent. Business owners can apply for up to $2 million in loans. If you have been flooded or damaged by the storm, you have until May 28th to apply. If you're a business owner with economic injury, you have until December 29th to apply. So some folks won't even know for months what the impact of this event is. There are a few things that the SBA can cover that the FEMA program doesn't encompass. One of them is debris removal, landscape repair. When you rebuild your home, you may have extra costs to comply with current building codes, we can add that to the loan amount. Like FEMA, we also offer money for mitigation. Mitigation is when you do something to the house, when you rebuild or the business, that prevents flooding event from happening in the future. A French drain, raising the foundation. We can loan 20 percent of your total loss in additional funds on top of the money that would be required to do the repair itself. How much does it cost to apply? Doesn't cost anything. If I'm approved and I don't like the loan payment, I don't like the terms, I don't want the loan, do I have to take the loan? No, there's no obligation to take the loan. You can take part of the loan. We'll give you 60 days to begin receiving the money. If you need longer, you can ask for that. Let's say you apply, you're approved, and you decide, "I don't want the loan." You applied by the deadline. We say, "Fine, loan's canceled." Three months later, the insurance company doesn't pay out, or the mold is worse, you can come back to us within six months of the day you closed the loan and say, "I changed my mind, I do need that loan," and we'll be happy to reactivate the loan. By applying by the deadline, you've opened up all kinds of opportunities. You've taken, you're not obligated in any way. And so my question would be, why wouldn't you go through a little bit of paperwork to have who knows what opportunity that you wouldn't have otherwise? And then lastly, as Manny said, some folks will say, "Well, I can't afford a loan. Why should, I'll just throw these papers away." Well, now you've just terminated any additional grant assistance that you may have been eligible for by submitting the paperwork, being considered, and declined for a loan. And some folks will be declined, they have to have acceptable credit, they have to have an income enough to pay a mortgage, a loan payment. If you're declined by the SBA, we will refer you back to FEMA to be considered for the Other Needs Assistance Program. Some folks will get more grant money after they've been declined for a loan. You could, when you're speaking to your loan officer, you could say, "I can't afford it." And that would be one good reason for the loan officer to say, "I agree," and refer you back to FEMA. So May 28th, May 28th, May 28th, register with FEMA, 1-800-621-FEMA. And of course, folks can go online with the SBA and apply for a disaster loan at sba.gov. You can walk into the Disaster Recovery Center in the tent down in the parking lot here in town and talk to someone face-to-face, ask questions, get answers, help filling out the paperwork. And we can also do it by mail, over the phone, whatever it takes. Does anyone have a question of the SBA program?
No questions.
No, but...
You talked about repair replacement up to $200,000. How do you handle the number of folks up in Cranston and Warwick specifically who've said, "Buy my home, take me out of this situation." How do you appraise? How do you get into a number there that's meaningful for everyone?
Sure. When you complete and submit your loan application, the SBA will send what we call a person that's a loss verifier, like an appraiser, to the property. And that person will say, "Here's the grand total of all your losses, all the damage you've suffered." Let's say it's $500,000. Well, the loan limit is still $200,000 for real estate repair, but we would be able to loan you a portion of it in that sort of a case. There is a situation where some people can relocate. If you have major damage, and by that I mean 50 percent or more damage to the property, if you have major damage and you intend to rebuild, under certain situations, you may take the money that the SBA approves to rebuild your house here in the floodplain, and you can say to the SBA, "I don't want to live next to the river anymore. I'm afraid to live next to the, I don't want to do this again." And we'll be glad to let you take that money and use it to buy a new house, build a new house or an existing house somewhere else. If it's within the same municipality, then we will always say yes. If you want to move to a different county or even a different state, that's acceptable as long as something more than just your wish is involved. For instance, you say, "I'm afraid I have health issues," or, "The city won't let me rebuild here." And so in those cases, folks can move anywhere. And I'll mention one last little unusual situation. Some folks will apply for the loan, and at 2 and 5/8 percent, 2.625 percent, they won't quite be able to afford their existing mortgage payment and a disaster loan payment. In that sort of a situation, the SBA will often refinance the existing mortgage at 2.625 percent. Now, everyone's going to say, "I want to do that." But you... But you have to have major damage, rebuilding, and you have to be in that unique category of person who almost but not quite qualifies. And the only way you can qualify is when a refinance is added to the picture. So again, you have no idea what help is available if you don't apply. We can't help you if you don't ask. And so I encourage everyone, take 10 minutes, name, address, Social Security number, where I work, or where my income is, my assets, my liabilities. It's not that complicated. I think most folks could go through the paperwork in about half an hour or less. We've got a lot of very experienced folks who unfortunately are very experienced helping flood victims. They're very understanding. "You've lost your records in the water, we can get around that." So I know folks will hear, "Well, so-and-so said they didn't get any help, so I'm not even going to try." But everyone is looked at on an individual basis with this disaster assistance program. And so each person's situation is different from the next, from their neighbor. So don't let your neighbor tell you, "You can't get help," unless you try. You should try. Thank you for your question, sir.
And one more.
Sure.
Can businesses get grants, or is it only loan?
Well, as far as FEMA is concerned, and I can't speak for FEMA, I don't believe there is a grant program with FEMA. But I believe Waverly has just found some money that they're going to make available to some of the small businesses in the form of grants. And that's a good reason why a business owner should register with FEMA, so that if some entity down the road has some grant money for a business, that business owner has been registered and we know how to find them. But the SBA doesn't make grants, FEMA doesn't make loans. But other than that, I believe it's Waverly, other than that one little town, I haven't heard of any kind of grant program that's forthcoming, but we never know.
Yeah. One of the first articles I read talked about Exeter Country Club, which the road was washed out to get to their business, and the reporter simply, in the interview with the owners, simply said they were unable to get emergency grants, that obviously the loan process was the way to go, but they had an emergency onsite, immediate situation.
Sure.
So it was a business, no matter what, needs to step to the plate, get there, because some are another. You can wind up with a good loan and a lot of help.
Homeowners and renters too. Yes, ma'am?
Could you tell me the hours that you're at the Wakefield Mall? I think that's an easy place for almost anyone to get to, and I think it would be so helpful to have someone sitting right there and helping you fill out that paperwork.
Oh, it is, it's very helpful. And it's stressful to be going through this and having to fool with paperwork at the same time. We understand that.
It is.
They're open seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. That's just changed recently. And Sunday's 12 to 6.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I'd like to point out that anyone affected has to realize that these are your tax dollars at work. And for many, many years, all of you, without even knowing it, have out of your pockets, through your tax dollars, helped other states. This is called payback. It's not a...
Payback? We didn't hear that.
I'd like at this point, because FEMA does not operate in a vacuum, FEMA partners with the state, other federal agencies, and we have other programs. And one of our top programs is called the Hazard Mitigation Program, How to Prevent Losses in the Future. And we have here tonight the coordinator of this program, Mr. Jamie Shaw. Please.
Thank you also for letting us come and speak with you. As Manny says, the mitigation program, we run into trouble with this word a lot of times because people come to us and they, "Well, what is mitigation?" And it's a simple thing, it's prevention. And we have staff that we, I place into the disaster recovery centers that, as they go along, they talk to individual assistants, they talk with SBA, and then before they leave, they also talk with one of my hazard mitigation specialists. And we try to help the folks in dealing with some of their issues, how to deal with mold. I brought, and various other issues, I brought some publications with me, which are available. If anything left, I'll leave with you. One of the best little pamphlets we have is on mold, and that seems to be, right now there are two major issues, as I'm looking at the reports coming in from the field. Right now, we're dealing with basement flooding, seepage, and severe mold that is growing every day. In regards to the mold, a lot of people do not understand how serious this can be. There are several varieties of mold, and if it's not addressed essentially almost immediately, the mold will start to grow inside the wall, and it can actually climb inside the wall and come across the ceiling. And in some cases, we try to tell people, "Look, if you have, if your ductwork has been compromised by the floodwaters," all right, you're looking at, if you were to run your heating system, even if it wasn't running, you have it repaired, without sanitizing these types of things, you could be pumping mold spores throughout your whole house. So as I said, there's some serious consequences, health-wise, and creating further and major damage if it's not addressed immediately. And part of that is, of course, to cut the drywall, remove the insulation, you have to make sure that you go as high and get beyond where the moisture has reached. You have to sanitize the wall cavity. And another issue that we discuss with people, that we talk with, are protective clothing, masks. People have a tendency, I go out there in my jeans and my sweatshirt, and I start scrubbing all this stuff, and then I get all through for the day, and I didn't wear a mask, and I get all through for the day, and then I throw all the dirty clothes in a hamper or on the bedroom floor. You're spreading those mold spores. So there's some serious issues that we try to talk to people about health, safety. I was in Texas once, and we were talking, they had, because of the humidity and what happened down there, people were actually breaking out with almost like a hive and what have you. And as I said, it can be very, very serious, especially for older people and young children. So there's a lot of information that we can give the folks who come in contact in regards to mold. I brought another publication, we call it The Yellow Book. Actually, it's got a real nice cover like this, but before it ended up with this cover or one like this, we put it together and called it The Yellow Book, and put a yellow page on front. And in here, we talk about anchoring fuel tanks, and there have been a lot of situations where the fuel tanks have tipped and contaminated, and now they have a hazmat situation in the basement, which is costing several thousand dollars to eradicate. We talk about elevating your appliances, mechanical, up above where the floodwaters may be. We talk about how doing that. One of the things that we've recommended to folks, there's been a lot of sewer backup. And there's a little item that costs about $47 through a home improvement store called a backflow valve. And essentially, it's a PVC thing, it's about that big, and it has a little flapper valve in there. So the affluence from the house will exit through the sewer pipes, and if there's any pressure coming the other way, this flapper stops it. And that will keep at least sewer backup out of the house. Now, it does, you have, it does require a permit, so we of course recommend they have to get ahold of building official. I just ran into the other day a situation where some people had an older type backflow valve, which actually turned to shut it off. Well, they wanted to be sure that they could still run the, flush the toilet and run the fluids through the house. Well, but the head pressure from the flooding was forcing water back up. We've also run across some septic tank failure. Now, I'm from California, and I'm sure that our homes are a lot newer than some of yours, and you've got some beautiful homes here. But a lot of the septic lines and what have you may be a lot older, and in time, their efficiency drops. So when all of a sudden you're running water from the house into the tank, which then must go through a leach field, and we have... and we have a flood event, you're creating pressure there, which is pushing back to fill up the tank. Where some people have gone and filled their, pumped their basement, I mean their septic tank, and a week later, it's full again, all right? As I said, it's because of that flood pressure out there. Another issue that's described in this book is what's called hydrostatic damage. When you have a basement, and especially with older type foundations, and you have a severe flood situation, with that void, and the flood around can actually create a pressure that can break the foundation walls and actually pop the floor up. And it's called hydrostatic damage. At which point, you've got a structural problem with the house. So, these are just some of the issues that we discuss with people after talking with them, and try to direct them or redirect them on how to fix these. We discuss with them how to hire a contractor, what to look for, how to get a proper estimate to be able to deal with the insurance company. And an important issue here, when we counsel the people, is to know the full extent of your damage. We talked a little bit about finding things later, and always seems to happen. So you want to get estimates, and it doesn't matter who. Generally, when I talk to folks, I'll tell them, "Look, I want you to go find the Cadillac contractor. The guy's really experienced, he's not accustomed to losing money, and he's going to make sure he's got everything in that estimate, all laid out. And it doesn't matter who you decide to have do the work, but you need all the information that you can get, so that you can direct your contractor into repairing this properly." So these are just some of the things. There's another booklet here that covers everything from mold, health issues, various other aspects of mitigation. There's another one here that shows flood-resistant materials, and various products, types of products that you can use. We have another program besides our mitigation folks in the DRCs, or Disaster Recovery Centers, and that is the, our outreach program. And right here in North Kingston, at the Home Depot Store, I have a team in there. And they have a booth there, and many of our publications available. And they're there to talk with anybody, assist them, and direct them back to the recovery center, back to SBA. We talk to them about insurance issues, if that happens to come up, and the rebuilding process. And I have teams that we're trying to spread out across the affected counties to, as I said, try and reach as many people as possible. The program has been extremely well. Just to give you an idea, I opened these outreach locations on Saturday, and already, we have come in contact with about sixteen hundred people, just in the two days. And the people that seem to, since, from what I understand, this is my first trip to Rhode Island.
Welcome.
But it's, from what I understand, this, you haven't had a flood event like this in over twenty years. So, a lot of this information is new stuff for people.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So, as I said, we really recommend that the people get out to our locations. Our publications, if people go on FEMA.gov, our publications, all of them are available to the folks in the Internet section.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, yes, very informative. Appreciate that.
As a final segue, I just want to mention that we have the owner program. It's a state, we work with the state. Anybody that may have had damages to their property, including their car, transportation, medical, dental, funeral, are also qualifiable by calling that one hundred number. I'd like to, in closing, just introduce the person responsible for the National Flood Insurance Program, which is Mr. Jerry Frye, and with this, we shall conclude.
First of all, I'm not responsible for the National Flood Insurance Program, Congress is. But I will, being an ex-baseball coach and a high school level and an insurance man, I like numbers, okay? I'm going to give you some numbers. Bill was a little bashful, I guess, to give you his SBA numbers. But as, through Saturday, they have given out ten million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in loans. FEMA through Saturday, Manny didn't mention this, but I will, and this is as of Saturday, we have had twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy applicants, and we have given out twenty-eight million, six hundred thousand dollars in grants. Now, moving right along with statistical data, since nineteen seventy-eight through April of two thousand and ten, no, excuse me, through February of two thousand and ten, the total paid losses in the state of Rhode Island for flood insurance was thirty-five million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This event alone, the estimated losses is going to be in excess of twenty-five million dollars in flood insurance. My job is to answer any questions that people may have, or insurance companies may have. That's, I go out and visit insurance agents to make sure that they are clear when they talk to the general public regarding flood insurance. I want to make sure that I, I'm trying to get it to every insurance agent in the state of Rhode Island, and I'm just glad it's not a big state. So it doesn't take long to get from one end to the other. So if anyone has any questions or anything, we will be around until the end of the meeting, probably. And if anyone has any questions, they can certainly stop by and ask. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Any questions? Good.
Jim, did you have a question?
From Manny.
From Manny.
Is there a final inspection report or certificate or good standing that you will issue? I own a small real estate company. You mentioned the word mitigation, and you've just lost all kinds of value, no matter what the repairs have been. What do you offer those homeowners, so they have some value left in those homes?
Well, our role is basically to encourage people to register. Anyone that is a homeowner and is uninsured or underinsured, there are monies to help them to repair. If they qualify for a loan, we already heard a lot of what can be done by the Small Business Administration. If it is in the form of a grant, the maximum that is allowed by the Stafford Act is twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. And it's basically patch, patch, patch. It would not make the person, the homeowner, whole, as it were before. But the key is, we're stressing the importance of actually getting into the National Flood Insurance Program, which is very inexpensive, and it's a surefire way of actually securing this from happening again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Any other questions from Manny, while he's up there? No. Thank you very much. I have to say, that is a very thorough presentation by all of you, and I really, truly appreciate all the information. I didn't have any flooding damage, so I didn't have to go and see you. I read some of the articles in the paper, but really, just a great presentation. I hope a lot of people really take advantage of the dates, you know, the May twenty-eighth date, to, you know, at least file and get on record, and God forbid, something happened down the road. And it's great to see our tax dollars at work like this, and I really, it was very impressive. Thank you, all of you, for coming.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. So, next we have approval of the minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the minutes for the work session, April twelfth, two thousand and ten.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the regular session from April twelfth, two thousand and ten.
Motion to approve the regular session, April twelfth, two thousand and ten.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. A license, excuse me, a resolution granting a tourist accommodation license to Meyer House LLC, five ninety-two Matunik Schoolhouse Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for two spaces, four persons, in accordance with a special use permit granted January twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten, by the zoning board of review. The application is by Heather Meyer, five ninety-two Matunik Schoolhouse Road, Wakefield. And this is a new license application. Is Heather here?
Yes.
Oh, Heather, come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So you have tourist accommodations, so would you like to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Well, I'm turning my house, hopefully, into a bed and breakfast. I have been through fire inspection, plumbing, electrical, building inspection. I started with a planning board and then special use permit, and this seems to be licensing the last piece.
Okay. So we're holding you from your B and B, is that what it is?
Excuse me?
We're holding you from your B and B right now.
I'm close.
You're close, you're very close. Does anybody have any questions for Heather? Jim?
The fire inspection, what were they looking at? What were they asking you to do, or did you comply?
I totally complied. They gave me a whole list. I had to put in smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and I had to put in emergency exit signs with backup lighting. They walked through my house and said, "Do this here, here, and here." I said, "Okay." So, I also had to make evacuation plans that are stapled onto the back of the guest room doors. I followed their instructions to the T.
Any rooms on the second floor, are they all first floor?
They're second floor rooms.
Okay, all right. But do you have to provide some kind of egress, outer window, or fire escape, or can it still be internal?
Nope, down the stairs.
Okay, all right. And it's just one stairs coming down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I did do exactly what they asked for, and I have, you know, met their conditions. I mean, I've already been granted a certificate of occupancy.
All right, great.
Will you be open all year, or do you plan to be open just in?
I plan to be open all year.
All year, great.
I might take vacation, if it's good enough, but-
Well, I hear that's the nice part about B and Bs. If you do want to go off, you just don't rent rooms that week.
Well, I've spent most of my life working for other people, so I thought now it'd be nice to work for myself.
Now, how about handicap accessibility? Is there any issues with that? Was that brought up?
I have railings, but my house is twenty-five years old. Those stairs would not work.
Okay, I was wondering about that, all right.
I'm only doing two rooms.
Two rooms, sorry.
It would probably be an issue if it was bigger, but-
Okay, that might be into that.
She's not doing any special events.
No, so she's not doing the events?
Oh, no.
That's right, yeah. That was where it came, in the back of my mind, B and B and handicap, I had an issue with that. You're right, it was with the special events, okay. Ella, I didn't know if you had a question?
No, I'm all set.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I move approval of License A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next is License B. A resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a five-k road race on Sunday, May sixteenth, two thousand and ten, at nine a.m. to Karate Instruction Assistance Initiative Incorporated, also known as KIAI, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the risk manager and the State Traffic Commission approval. The application is by Julie Conti, President, two twenty-eight Robinson Street, Wakefield, and this is a new license application. Is Julie here? I believe I saw her. There she is.
Good evening.
Hi, Julie. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about your race?
Okay, it's on May sixteenth. It's a fundraiser, five-k race. It starts and ends at Ichiban Karate on Robinson Street. KIAI is a nonprofit organization that provides martial arts scholarships, and that's what we do. And this is our first five-k that we're holding.
Okay.
And I-
So, does anybody have any questions, Julie?
Just what is the route, just so everyone will know.
Okay, the route, I'm going to describe it to you street by street, okay? It starts along the side of Ichiban, it goes up Orchard, and then it takes a left on Silver Lake. Do you have a copy of the map? Because I know I submitted it.
I'm sure it's-
No, we did not get it, no.
Okay. It goes left on Silver Lake, right on Woodruff, right on Salt Pond, right up Kenyon Avenue by the hospital. And then it takes a little loop through a neighborhood, and it stops short of the Silver Lake Bridge. And it turns before that, back to Kenyon, down to Main Street, and all the way around Main Street, back down Cherry Lane and Robinson.
Wow.
You can do it.
You can do that one, Jim.
I will drive it.
Couple of small hills in there, nothing too challenging for you, Jim. Yeah. Any other questions for Julie? No. Well, I know that you've been working hard on this. We were talking about this on the soccer field this weekend. She had to change the plans a couple of different times, but she's got a very safe route there, and it's been approved, so.
Just want to, yeah, is this, do you sanction this? It's perfectly measured, so there are-
It will be, as soon as I have the permit from the town. Ray Nelson with the USA Track and Field Association will be measuring it. He just kind of wanted it to be official first. And that's where I'm getting my insurance from, by the way, as well. And I have information on that, if you needed it. The USA Track and Field sanctioning provides insurance, and town of South Kingston is named.
Okay. Dale, did you need that?
Actually, it'd be nice to have a copy of that, because we see a lot of this.
It's all complete?
This is just from the website. The certificate of insurance has not come through yet. But if you want that, her records, it's covered. It says on here that you needed the amount of insurance to be specified by the risk manager. I was never given a number, as far as that goes. But that, what's covered is on that first sheet right there.
Okay. So when that comes in, that you just bring that to town hall?
We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, Julie? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve License B, and good luck.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, I hope you raise a lot of money.
Thank you.
Yep, that's Julie. Okay, next we have communication items, and we're going to go to communication item G. A resolution adopted April thirteenth, two thousand and ten, by Warren Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to enact legislation requiring seat belts on school buses is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. What's the council like to do with that item?
We really just mentioned this in the work session. We didn't talk about it very much, but I think we decided to place it on file.
Second.
Okay, so it's motioned, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, I just, maybe Ella, you would know. Has this been talked about through school committees over the years, state level? What, is it up to individual bus companies, individual cities and towns? What?
Maybe my recollection, Jim, probably once, maybe twice, in the eight years that I served on the school committee. We do have some handicapped, smaller buses that do require safety belts and locking in of wheelchairs, but we've never really pursued on the bigger buses, so.
Thank you.
Again, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution adopted April twelfth, two thousand and ten, by the Johnston Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to vacate financial mandates pertaining to municipal and school employee pensions, health insurance, cost sharing, and public school employee healthcare benefits is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. What's the council want to do?
Again, we discussed it, and I think we decided, this is, we've addressed most of these previously, and we decided to place this on file.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a communication dated April twentieth, two thousand and ten, from Judd Nuzem and John F. Hadley, requesting a moratorium on building permits in the Biscuit City, Little Rest, and Parkwood areas of Kingston, requesting special use permits which grant relief from existing town wetland and wetland stream setbacks as specified in the petition submitted at the April twelfth, two thousand and ten Town Council meeting is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. What's the council like to do with this letter?
Well, we got quite a bit of information on this, none of which pointed to, I guess I would suggest we place it on file.
Kathy, maybe I can-
Okay, Steve?
There are really two items. One is the letter that was received-
One is the letter that was received on, to the council on the 422 package, item G, and that was a letter again from Mr. Nusum and Mr. Hadley requesting that the council consider again this evening placing an item on the agenda that would call for a moratorium on construction of lots in the Biscuit City Little Rest sections where they would require a special use permit based on setbacks from the road or requirements as far as septic system being within 150 feet of the wetland. The, this letter followed a petition that was filed with the council at the last council meeting that sought similar action. The petition was received by the council and forwarded to the manager's office. I then requested staff to prepare responses on the information presented within that petition. Within the petition itself, particularly, they were requested the council to impose an immediate moratorium on building permits requiring special use permits which grant relief from existing town wetland and wetland stream setbacks in the Biscuit City Little Rest areas of Kingston. The report that was prepared and authored by Ray Nickerson, the principal planner for environmental issues, reviewed each of the concerns expressed within the, that petition. And essentially, Mr. Nickerson did not concur with some of the conclusions being drawn within the petition, essentially suggesting that the data from 1932 forward, that the rainfall amounts for the month of March, while 30% higher than any previously recorded, the rainfall amounts over the, over a study period, it would be inconsistent to say that over the last 10 years that there had been a change, or that because of the record snow, rainfall, which could in fact be greater than a 100-year storm, that it would change widths of streams or redefine areas of wetland. I also requested a memo from the solicitor relative to the steps necessary to impose moratorium. The solicitor provided a detailed memo, which I'll let him address, but specifically indicates that councils have the authority to impose moratoriums on construction for two specific reasons. One, for compliance with the comprehensive community plan, and two, where dire emergency situations exist. Based on the report prepared by Mr. Nickerson, we do not believe from a staff perspective that a dire emergency condition existed or does exist today in the area that has been the subject matter of the petition before you. From a staff recommendation is we are not proposing that the council entertain, propose, or enact a, an emergency condition moratorium. I think one of the more important things is that moratorium can be used for the purpose of dealing with an issue and coming up with a solution for the issue. So if in fact we were looking at, we were saying that we were going to change drainage patterns so that they would effectively be able to accommodate overall 100-year storm, that we would put in a time period in which we would have a hydrology study completed, a engineering study completed, and a drainage system designed and approved through DEM that would be able to resolve those problems. That type of a drainage system doesn't exist anyplace in the community, and in fact would be much more aggressive in terms of its scope than would be a best management practice for the installation of drainage. I think that the, that the best that we can do at this time is to deal with continued evaluation on the drainage in those, that general area, determine whether there are any enhancements or improvements that can be made, determine how those can be incorporated into future budgets. I think that that's the best that we can suggest that can be accommodated in terms of addressing the concerns that are within that petition. I think one of the basic concerns that we have is that in defining the number of lots, which we estimate that there could be 19 vacant lots in that study area that would fall under the, the scope of the petition request, 13 of which potentially could accommodate septic systems, if none of those were built on and we had the same rainfall tomorrow, we would have the same results. So stopping that development, if in fact those are buildable lots, is not going to resolve the problem that was experienced by the greater community and the state of Rhode Island in terms of the, that significant rainfall that occurred within that 24-hour period. I understand and I sympathize with the concerns expressed by the petitioners. However, I do not think that the development of an emergency moratorium, that we have the components available to us to provide for a legitimate moratorium that would be protected by the laws that exist in the state. And with that, I'd ask Michael to comment more specifically on the, his memorandum.
As Steve mentioned, the standard which the council would have to find is met here as one of a dire emergency. That's, that language is actually right in the statute. And just to take a quick quote, the statute recognizes the need for a moratorium in a dire emergency, provided that such limitation is reasonably necessary to alleviate the emergency, and is limited to the time reasonably necessary to alleviate the emergency. So what you would have to do is at a public hearing, you would have to make findings of fact that a dire emergency exists. That would consist of such things of determining how many homes suffered damage, if anyone was actually put out of their home, what kind of continuing issue is being experienced by the homeowners there in terms of interruption of their enjoyment of their homes. As I pointed out in my memo, this would require something akin to what happened along the Patuxet River. In other words, today, there are over 2,000 people who still have not been able to return to their homes. That is the type of level of dire emergency that, in my opinion, from the facts as I know them, as set forth by Ray in his memo, and as have been presented by the petitioners, is very doubtful to me that this council would be able to make the appropriate findings of fact that would meet the legal standard. The downfall here is that if you did find a dire emergency existed, but the facts did not support such a finding, we would be open to legal challenge, obviously, by people who wanted to build and make use of their land. So as we go through, I'm more than happy to provide you with more specifics, but I think the language itself, you don't have to be a lawyer to figure out what a dire emergency, it's not just an emergency, it's a dire emergency. And that is the standard which the council will be held to.
Thank you.
I think one additional step that can be taken is to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of the existing 504 regulations within the zoning ordinance with the 150-foot setback from the freshwater wetland. We had set the 150 feet, which was in excess of the state standard, and we were able to prove that, that a city or town can exceed what the state standard is and provide for a more stringent standard, provided that there was relief provided through, through a zoning application, which is there. It may be that we need to reevaluate whether the 150-foot distance is an appropriate level or whether that should be, be longer than, be a greater distance, and whether or not the relief that can be granted with the zoning board has to be, to allow for any lot to be considered buildable if in fact it meets a DEM standard. Those things can be reviewed through the planning process, and since we're in the middle of a comprehensive community plan review at that time, is something that I've asked the planning director to review as to the efficiency of that standard at this point. But that would be the extent of looking at the drainage in that area, incorporating improvements if one, one were necessary into the budgetary process, as well as looking at the zoning aspect itself. That's the best that we could support and recommend to the council for consideration. We cannot support the petition as presented at the last meeting or requested in the letter submitted on April 20 to the, to the council. I know those folks are here tonight. Be glad to try to answer any of their questions that they may have.
Okay, does anybody else have any?
I wanted to ask Michael, have there been any dire emergencies on the Patuxet River?
I am not aware of any other community that has yet to declare a moratorium on building permits. I'm not aware of any community that has done that.
Thank you.
As a result of this catastrophic flood, right?
Okay, and Jim, I thought, sorry, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, Steve, if not falling under a dire emergency situation, do they need to petition us again to have planning, or have you put that in a memo to planning to review their request?
As far as the review of section 504, Jim?
Section 504, 150-foot rule.
I think you as the council could, could request the, the planning board to consider that in the evaluation of the land use plan. I can do it on the council's behalf, or if you think that it warrants the council requesting planning board review, you could do it as a request to the planning board yourselves.
The council have an issue with that?
No, I don't have an issue with that. I think the council has been pretty clear on the wetland and been aggressive, and I think it's been noted in Ray's memo. You know, we went through this three times at that particular lot, you know, I think September of '06, and November 13 of 2007, and then third application with the DEM. I mean, they were able to, to build on that corner part of the lot. It wouldn't be my particular choice for it, but that's, people have the right to build, and if they, they went through the process and they were able to build it. But we were always very solid, the town has always stood behind the freshwater wetlands, you know, protection. I have no problem if the planning wants to look at it at 200 feet.
I think that the main thing is that even if they were to extend that out to 200 feet, and even if they would have tried to set standards, the real question would be, when do they take all beneficial use away from a property? And if they are, does that become a taking, which would be an inverse condemnation?
Yeah.
And the 150 feet, when that was originally put in, that was one of the areas of concern. Obviously, you can go around the 150 feet by getting the special, special use permit where you can show that, that there's not going to be the environmental damage. Based on the presentations before the zoning board, that's where the determining, that determination has to be made. And as you say, that lot, which really is a focal point within the petition, is one that's gone through three applications, and on the first two, the council denied it on the basis that they were going to be within the, be within the, that 150 feet. And the council had made, made the position known that unless you get out of the wetland perimeter altogether, we're not going to be supportive of the application. They've done that, but to do that, they're moving the house up closer to the, to the street line. One other point that I do want to make, too, is that every effort has to be made to ensure that there's a net, net zero increase in any runoff from that lot. So the engineering on that, that, that house lot has to be such so that they can prove that there is not going to be any more runoff occurring from that lot than was occurring in its existing condition. So that was also referenced in the petition. So there's a number of things there that, while we certainly sympathize and see the concerns that the neighbors have with the construction of that lot, are things that would be at bar before the zoning board in terms of the presentations that have been made, both in favor and against the, the application's approval.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, but, but along with that issue of drainage, 150-foot rules, so on and so forth, there are also, you know, the setbacks that get, you know, you need variances for, it's this multiple effort of special use permits and setbacks, and it, it comes down to who can spend the most money for engineers. You can get any engineer you want, any broker you want, to fulfill what the zoning board would like to hear to pass this, but that's not the way to do business. Who can spend the most money on an application?
I think one of the rule changes, Jim, that's made this easier for somebody to continue to come back, and is that it used to be that you couldn't get a special use permit and a variance on the same lot.
Right.
That changed when the court said that you're entitled to be able to do that, because in years prior, they wouldn't be able to get the front line setback if they were getting a special use permit on the, the septic system, but that changed. And I'm not sure whether that was based on the ordinance or...
That's, that's correct. It was a court case.
And I think that changed a lot of the rules that, that, that we're dealing with at this point, is that now somebody can go in for both the variance and for the special use permit, where that wasn't at issue before. So it could be an issue that, that planning board looks at. I'm not sure that, that we can provide better relief or protection, but at least it could be evaluated by people that understand the zoning far better than I do.
Was that Newton Law or something like that, Michael?
What happened is there was a case that came out, and then the General Assembly actually amended the law to permit both dimensional variances and special use permits on the same lot.
So the General Assembly did that, not the courts?
Well, the court...
Courts sit then?
Right. The General Assembly adopted new, new language based upon the court decision.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Any other questions? Steve, yeah, anybody, please, yep, I was coming to the community. Just make sure you state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jude Nusum. I'm one of the petitioners, and I have some comments I'd like to make about some of the statements that have been made here, and also the report that was prepared by your planning department, by our planning department. Bear with me for a second. First, the report states that it would be difficult to support the fact that there's been an increase in rainfall in the past decade. And I'm going to tell you that it's very easy to support the fact that there's been an increase, and I'd like to provide you with information showing that.
Would you give it to our town clerk, Mr. Nusum? That's, well, she can pass that up.
What you can, what you can see there is a 6% increase this decade over last decade. It's very evident, and for the last five years, the increase over the 1991 to 2000 period is 12%. Secondly, using the same graph that Mr. Nickerson came up with and doing a, doing just a timeline on it, you can see that there has been a significant increase in rainfall since 1931. So, and I use the same data. I got it from University of Rhode Island. There has been an increase in rainfall. There's also, in the, in the past 15 years, and in the past 10 years especially, been an increase in the number of buildings that have been built, the number of houses that have built on wetland properties on the side of that hill. And unfortunately, I guess disagree with Mr. Alfred that, that that does not have an impact on flooding, because it does have an impact on flooding. Every time you build a house, you're taking town, on the side of that hill, you're taking town water and you're pumping it in to the ground, and you're also taking transpiration away by removing trees. Now, my interest is in Lot 123, but my greater interest is in the side of the hill. There are more lots up there, 13 to 16 more lots. This has got to stop people. It really does. We have serious problems. We've had a hydrostatic event just down the, just down the hill from me where a basement floor essentially exploded. We've had many people, including myself, who've incurred significant damage to finished basements. Now, I incurred damage, and many of the other people incurred damage even before the big rain on the 30th of March. The rains of the 24th and 25th caused problems with some seepage in my basement and in other basements, some of which had not been wet ever. My basement had been wet, wet... My basement had been wet 20 years ago, but I mitigated that by doing some landscaping and doing some other things. So, we definitely have a problem here. I'd also like to disagree with the solicitor's comment that there's, you know, he seemed to indicate that there was only one reason where he can declare a moratorium. The other reason is comprehensive plan, and your zoning board is not following the comprehensive plan. They're required to look at surrounding properties and make sure that there is no impact on abutters. The standard of proof here has been reversed. They are to prove, the petitioner is to prove, that he is not going to impact the abutters. And what has happened is, over the past 10, 15 years, the abutters have got to prove that they are being affected and have done so in the past, that they are being affected or will be affected, and it's been ignored by your zoning board. I was, I was a direct recipient, recipient of that situation in 2002, when Lot 122 was built on, despite the fact that it was, it impinged on wetlands. Also, 124 was built on with a wetlands exception. Both of these have high-tech systems. So, uphill from me, I am now going to have three wetland exceptions, three direct abutters that are uphill from me are going to have these wetland systems. A total of 20,000 square feet will have been taken out of natural transpiration, and all that moisture is going to flow back into the ground and, and not percolate because of the soil type we have there, which I will get to in a minute. And what is going to happen is that I'm going to be washed away along with the rest of the side of the hill. Now, Lot 124 may not be a killer for me, but the rest of those lots up the hill will, and for a lot of other people. You know, this is a dire situation. You may not recognize it, in a couple of years, when we have a hurricane, you will recognize it, because what else is happening is, the trees that are buffers on these wetland properties during this past flood, uprooted without any wind, if we have a hurricane and we get any sort of significant rain, like we did with Hurricane Bob and the hurricane, whatever it was in the 80s, you're going to have massive destruction now because of this wetland building, of all the buffer trees along the wetland streams. And then what are you going to have? You're going to have muck and mess and disaster for people who live in those areas. Now, when I go to the zoning board, they tell me, "Well, we know it's wet, tell us something new." And they tell us, you know, "You shouldn't have bought there, you should have known." Well, many of us came from out of state. We bought assuming that the town would do due diligence in granting permits to build. And I think in the past, it probably did, until the advent of these new systems that were designed to help people whose systems had failed and who had existing homes to be able to remediate their, their lack of, the ability to suit, to, to treat sewage. That was the reason they were designed. Now, they're being abused to put homes on the side of the hills and in other places where they should not be. Now, I am warning you now that a hurricane is going to cause a tremendous amount of damage in this town, and we are going to have one. And it's not going to take another flooding period like the one we had in, in March to do the significant damage that we've had, it's going to take less damage. It's going to take less damage because the water has established new pathways. Back to 123, Lot 123 for a second, I am really very upset about that because apparently, apparently, the DEM and perhaps some people in this town have ignored the fact that the wetland growth is closer, even closer, much closer than is stated on the application. There's wetland growth starting 45 feet from Ledgewood Road, adjacent to where the septic system is. There's no way the setback is, is not impacting on wetlands. DEM is over, overtaxed, understaffed. I know that, and, and I don't want to pay the price for it, and I don't think the town should make me have to pay that price for it. Now, we're going to have a decision tomorrow night from the zoning board. I'm not optimistic, based on past experience, that we're going to have any change in, in what I have to say is, an approach that I would find somewhat unintelligent. They ignore the facts, they don't want to, they will not reopen the case because they feel there's a legal problem. They're quasi-judicial, but they're not judicial, but they're not, I don't know what they are, but they will not reopen to hear information from the events of March, the March flooding. And I just think that's untenable. And they won't go back and look to re-verify the fact that there's skunk cabbage in the area where I say it is, which is far closer than what it says on the application. But again, the reason I'm here tonight is the side of the hill, it's those other lots that are really going to be killers. And you're going to destroy the value, my, I, one of the council members came by to look at my house, and he said right now that he couldn't sell my house. I've got significant damage, I'll be doing the work myself, it's probably in the neighborhood. If somebody else was doing, doing it $25,000, $20,000 to $25,000. You know, I had, I had relieved my foundation to keep it from exploding, or at least I thought it was going to. I would also... Did I break this? No, I guess it's just unscrewed.
He's our audiovisual guy. Sorry about that.
Secondly, there is a report, in the document that I, the documents that I gave you, it's a, it's a report by a PhD hydrologist and hydrogeologist that differs widely from what Mr. Nickerson says the soil type and soil condition is in this town. And this is a PhD from University of Rhode Island, who's now the department chair there for the geo, the geosciences department. That report says that the soil is not permeable, and I think that there ought to be some resolution by the town of what type of soil we have there, because it is not permeable. If I dig down six or seven inches in my, in my yard, I hit clay, and clay isn't really very permeable. So, we get a lot of surface water runoff, and then over in the area of Lot 123 and Ledgewood Road, we have a situation where the water flows, and we don't know how it flows, because there are ledges, there are springs. So, we're, 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 we're just going blindly ahead with this, with this building and, and, and as far as I'm concerned, and as far as the town is concerned, every lot in that whole area is non-conforming to begin with. So, we're going to build no more non-conforming to add on to non-conforming. It's a formula for disaster. I really think that you need to do this moratorium. If you get sued, that's why I pay my taxes, if the town gets sued for doing a moratorium, that's the job of government, to enforce its regulations. Your regulations provide setbacks, they provide rules that are supposed to be followed that relief should not be granted lightly on. And again, if this is good government, then good government looks out for the best interests of the people of the town, the people of the community, and it does what it needs to do. And if there's a lawsuit, there's a lawsuit. And if we win, so that's good, and if we don't win, we've tried, we fought the good fight. Now, I want you people to fight the good fight here, that's what I'd like to see. And one more thing I'd like to mention to you about our climate, and I've been talking to you about what's going to happen to the, to the, the trees along these wetlands. Maybe you're aware, maybe you're not, that we have, over the last decade, crossed into the category of temperate rainforest. And with that comes a whole group of conditions that we're going to have to contend with, with regard to wetlands. And that's what happens in wetlands, you can read all about temperate rainforests and what development does in temperate rainforests. And there were shows on, on this past weekend on public television concerning what's happening in temperate rainforests where construction has gone rampant. I want to thank you for your time, for your attention, and I want to ask you to be my good government, to be a leader in the, in the state of Rhode Island, and, and, and do something about a situation that is going to harm this town if you don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Sir?
My name is Larry Englander, I'm resident of Kingston. The practice of requesting and receiving variances is an honorable one. Established residents who suddenly are confronted with unexpected needs or events can seek relief from regulations, many of which were enacted during the years the property owner lived there. So, seeking exemptions which will allow these folks to continue living on their property is the right thing to do. In fact, that was the substantial benefit of the recent special ISDS waste disposal systems that were developed, to provide existing properties on which conventional septic systems failed after years of use, a way to remedy this so they could continue living in their house, on their property. Unfortunately, these new ISDS technology systems have been capitalized on by speculators who, with their eyes wide open, buy standard lots and develop them once getting variances approved. While the ISDS technology may well provide for safe and clean waste disposal, the lots which have been routinely developed, often wet spots, are now offline as reservoirs, as sponges, as buffers for heavy rain events, holding and slowly releasing the water which initially accumulates. I have sat through a number of zoning board meetings. I'm encouraged by the variances granted to disadvantaged homeowners. However, I am shocked at the variances routinely handed out to short-term investors who recently and knowingly purchased lots which need substantial variances in order to be granted building rights, and this to the disadvantage of surrounding residents. I would like to offer a chart, if you don't mind, I know it didn't help Ross Perot, but... I'd like to contest the notion that the recent flood was a once-in-a-century event, and that we shouldn't be concerned that it will repeat itself. We had, in March, initially, two small events over a week apart, one was less than four inches, then 4.7 inches. The third rain event, the big one, occurred nearly a week later, that was just under 10 inches of rain. I wish to speak to a point in time before the 10-inch, 100-year, 200-year, whatever you want to call it, rain event. Several, and you'll, if you've received the chart, you'll notice there's a line on it before the big event. Several decades ago, after years of my basement in Kingston taking in water after heavy rains, I had a civil engineer assess my situation, and I made modifications ranging from regrading and cutting a swell around the upslope side of my house, to roof rainwater redirecting away from the house and downstream, a number of modifications. From that moment on, I took in no water, I was kicking myself for not doing it sooner, until March 24th, a full six days before the 10-inch rain. I have, at the time of those modifications, way back, I had an 18-foot inspection well dug at the upper slope side of my house with a, lined with a pipe and gravel on the bottom, so that I could determine and know whether it was runoff water on the surface that was coming down and filling my foundation hole, or whether it was subsurface water from deep down that was rising up. And it turns out, that inspection hole finally came into great use this time, after many years of it being just sitting there. I can say without any question, it was not surface water running off in a, in a rain event. And again, keep in mind, I'm talking about the two smaller rains, not the big rain. It was groundwater that came from deep down and slowly rose in that inspection hole from, from way down deep. What has changed? The allowance, I think, by the town, by, by granting variances and other things, of building on buffer grounds. The consequences to me are the loss of a, a fully one floor of my house, one-third of my house is no longer of any substantial use to me. I wouldn't dare risk putting anything down there or having my workshop down there anymore. It, it's too big a risk, with just a couple of smallish rains causing this sort of problem that I underwent. I understand that the town is protecting itself against lawsuits by developers, but what about the responsibility to and the liability from existing impacted homeowners? And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, thank you. I thought I saw another hand, if somebody else would like to come up. Please come forward. State your name for the record.
There were a couple of items in this planning department menu that I wanted to just question a little bit. One was the fact that when they talk about a 100-year event, they always say, "Well, there's only a 1% chance that that event will occur." Well, that's not quite true. Statistically, that event has about a 67% chance of occurring. And you say, "Well, how does that happen?" Well, it's math. You, you take 99 years of what you hope will not be the event, and you run it out to the 30th power, and you come up with 67. So, that's based, if you have a 30-year loan on your house mortgage, there's a good chance that you're going to see a 100-year event in about 30 years, 33, 35 years, whatever you wish. So, that's just one little item in his, in this report. The second thing is on his summary, the fourth article, he says, "Given existing soil constraints, et cetera, et cetera," which must be given to site development. Municipal boards and commissions reviewing development proposals should ensure," and I repeat that word, "ensure," that necessary mitigation, and I'll come back to mitigation in a minute, "be incorporated into site design. Such mitigation should specifically address potential stormwater drainage impacts to adjacent properties and roadways." Well, mitigation probably isn't a complete solution, but since the municipal board is trying to ensure that the adjacent properties aren't damaged, you would hope that by mitigating those circumstances, they would pretty damn well eliminate them. But this isn't the case with tri-level construction. So, I'm going to just backtrack a minute. Now, I bought a tri-level construction house on Lot 123 on Biscuit City Road in good faith. Brian Lind sold it to me, and we liked the house, we enjoy it, it's a nice place. But we specifically asked him at the time, "What are you going to do with the adjacent Lot 123, which is a part of that moratorium petition?" And we never did get an answer. I couldn't tell you, I couldn't tell you to this day what he said to me, you know, it was kind of a mumble. So, then comes Mr. Lind again, a couple of years later, and he's going to build on it. Now, I knew he owned it, but as I say, there was no indication he was going to build on it. So, Mr. Lind is going to take this lot, or about a third of it, close to the street, a third of an R20 lot, and he's going to run three- and four-ton machines across this lot. He's going to take all those trees out. He cannot put that house in without removing 99% of the trees. He did it on my lot, he cannot do anything else on that lot. Then, he's going to run three- and four-ton machines over this lot and compress and compact the undersoil to the nth degree, because I know that, because my wife and I are great planters, and we've started to dig down, and what do we find? Which I would have realized, because he had to put in tops, he had to put in probably a gravel mix to slope up to the basement, which in our situation is 35 feet from the street, and his, his situation on this next house is only going to be 25 feet from the pavement, if he's lucky, I guess. So, he's compacted all that undersoil, and then they come along with these fancy little engineering plans, they say, "Oh, we'll, we'll build this up for about three feet of permeable soil, so that there'll be nice drainage." And all this drainage is supposed to go down through the driveway. Well, the driveway is going to be on my side of his property. It's not going to be up on the Biscuit City side where there's no other house. It's not going to be up on the Biscuit City side where there's no other house available. So all this nice drain water is supposed to percolate down through the driveway. It hits that compacted soil because he's not going to go in with a machine and dig that up and soften it up so it's nice and soft back to its original state. You can't, never can get it that way. Then, I'm going to have a terrace from the side of his house directly down onto my yard, the same as my yard terraces down onto the adjacent neighbor's yard, except that the adjacent neighbor didn't have to disturb as much of his original soil. So he probably benefits from a little more absorption, although he gets water in his basement. But I'm going to get water, and I mean, I've seen it run down onto my, under my grass already from the woodlands beside me, which that lot now is, Mr. Lind's lot, and in this last event, it pooled in my backyard. I prided myself on having the driest basement on the block, but I don't have that accolade anymore. I had a wet basement, but not bad. But it's going to be worse. There is, he is not mitigating anything. He is exacerbating the situation, and specifically on my lot, and it'll roll down into Mr. Newsom's lot, too. I mean, I look down into the far corner of Mr. Newsom's lot, and he is the lowest common denominator, literally. Everything flows down to his property. He is taking a beating, not in a 100-year event, in any significant rainstorm event. So I just say to you, you got to think of these things. You cannot allow people, developers, to build properties knowing there's going to create problems. This is a tough economy. People are hurting. I've seen people, we walked through Little Rest, we walked through Parkwood, we walked Biscuit City. We talked to people over the past couple of weekends, and I'll remind you that there was a petition with 63 signatures, and we even were able to collect five or six more, and we could have gotten another five. We could have made an even dozen, but we figured we'd quit. These people are not happy with the situation. It's not just myself and Mr. Newsom who brought the petition forward, it's the rest of that community. Well, you say, maybe 65, 70 people is a great many, a great many families. Each of those signatures represents one house, but you have to remember, the density of the houses up there isn't as great as you would say in Newport. So that's quite a significant amount of people that have, that have come forward and vehemently come forward and said, "We don't like this situation. We want to see this stop." They didn't sign it out of goodwill. They knew what we were asking them to sign, and they signed it. And they are all taxpaying citizens, and some of them up there were really hurting. I mean, they were really hurting. They just, and as we went through this weekend, just to notify people about what we had achieved or not achieved in the past couple of weeks, we noticed that there's still water weeping out of that neighborhood. It's still coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this matter? Jen?
Michael. What does it take to have the zoning board open up for compelling evidence, which of course the recent rains were? But what does it take to get them to look at some of this information they've provided? I have no idea if this was provided to them earlier, but it seems after the recent events that that would be the right thing to do.
If they're going to reopen, they need to advertise, re-advertise that the hearing's been reopened so that any abutters have noticed that it's being reopened. That's a decision that I believe they were asked to do, and they declined to do so at the last meeting, so, I mean, it's...
They didn't have any grounds to do it.
Right. In other words, and I was not there for that.
Tell them the actions which took place.
So they did not have grounds to reopen the meeting?
Excuse me. What they decided was that there's a 45-day rule.
You have to speak into the microphone because people can't hear you at home from sitting there.
I was at that meeting, and what they decided was that they could not reopen because there's the 45-day rule, and because this thing has drug on for so long, that because of the 45-day rule, they are going to meet tomorrow night to make a decision. They didn't feel that they had enough time, they didn't have enough time with the 45-day rule to reopen and re-advertise. Now, that's why I made mention of the fact that sometimes they're judicial and sometimes they're not judicial when they don't want to be. Anytime that there is a judicial situation and there's compelling information, which there is, in a judicial situation, there's a reopening. But because they're quasi-judicial, they feel that they don't have the right to do that. We would be very happy to have it reopened, and we feel that there would be very compelling information based on the March floods, based on the spring spread of the skunk cabbage and the obvious change to the wetland, the wetland stream flow. But as it stands right now, tomorrow night at 5:30, they're going to meet to make a decision within the 45-day timeframe.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Mike, did that, let that spark something?
Yeah, I'm looking at some information that talks about the fact that the authority to determine whether the application complies with Rhode Island DEM requirements is vested with Rhode Island DEM. The zoning board would be exceeding its authority if it addressed the validity of the RIDM approvals. And there's actually been many cases, and one just recently in Charleston that came out two weeks ago, that said a zoning board, you know, must basically accept Rhode Island DEM's decisions with regard to the areas for which they're expert at, and that would involve these new onsite wastewater disposal systems.
Okay. Well, you know, this is an item, you know, this is not new to the council. I mean, we, I remember back in, let's see, what council was that? The second, the second council term that I was on with Paul and Cynthia and Jim and Polly and I, that this came, came up before. There were more neighbors who had these wetland issues, or had these drainage issues, you know, not even pertaining to this, this particular storm. You know, whether the rain is up, up or down, you know, I guess you could read these graphs the way you want to read these graphs, but, you know, it's, what, the problem there is that what all of you need is really to have, you know, improvements done down there. You know, whether stopping these houses or not, you know, you still have had problems. There were problems in the past before all these, before these houses went, and you've had problems probably for as long as you've had those houses down there. And it's been said that, you know, you didn't know, or you didn't know, you shouldn't have probably built there. The only thing that the town, I think, can do at this point is, you know, is look at and see what we can do for drainage improvements. And, you know, as far as the bonding, you know, I don't know if we can go out to bond at this point with it, you know, we have to look at the financials of it. And then, you know, it would be a question of, you know, something like even sewers in that area, and then it's going to be a cost to the homeowners, which is probably something that should have been done a long time ago in that particular area. So, I mean, I think that's what we have to look at as a town. I think Mr. Alfred had mentioned that earlier, that, you know, we have to look at maybe just, you know, what we can do as far as the drainage improvements, you know, on this particular item. I don't know if the, what Mike's saying with the zoning commission, that they can, the zoning board, you know, can change anything considering what happened with that Charleston case at this point. So, I mean, we've been through this, I've heard about the water issues over there. I also have to concur with what, you know, what's been put in front of us is that you want a dire emergency declared, and, you know, legal says that we really can't do that. And I have to go with my legal. I know it might upset you, but, I mean, I have to, with that particular, what's in front of us is dire emergency. I don't think this qualifies as that. I don't think it would pass as that, and I think we would probably open ourselves up to lawsuits. Again, I think it goes back to really a drainage improvement area, issue in that whole area that has to be looked at. And it probably should have been done maybe about 10 or 20 years ago instead of landing in our lap. I don't know if any of the other people in the council have anything else to say regarding it. I mean, I've heard all the hydraulic soil things. I've heard this years past. I mean, I know that area. I mean, you've heard this before, so if you would like to come forward and state something, please do.
We were promised a drainage improvement 20, 20 years ago, and there was some drainage improvement that basically has been a disaster. I would encourage the town to take a look at what it's done and try to improve on it, certainly. And I'd also like to remind you what council said, and that was that dire emergency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
And this is definitely inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
I just want to point out that my memo that I provided clearly discussed two areas. The one involving the comprehensive plan is a much more involved process that certainly couldn't be done within the next two to three weeks. There'd have to be findings by the planning board submitted to you. There'd have to be a change to the comprehensive plan in that area, and for a whole lot of reasons, you could go through a process whereby perhaps a moratorium could be justified under that condition. But the petition that was submitted was really relying on the immediate water situation based on the flooding that took place, which is why, in my opinion, the only one that applied right now was the second reason for being able to declare a moratorium, that being the dire emergency.
The comprehensive plan is not being observed by the zoning board, and you have, you don't have to change the comprehensive plan, although I understand it's under revision right now. You don't have to change it. And if it takes three or four weeks, if we get a, if we get a finding tomorrow night that's unfavorable, then we'll probably appeal it. In fact, I think we're definitely going to appeal it. However, I'm telling you, I'm here, I'm probably most impacted of anybody by this lot on 123. If I lose on 123, I lose. I'm going to fight the good fight, but...
And you're right next door to 123, correct? Is that...
Oh, yeah. As I mentioned to you, uphill from me, I'm going to have three of these lots that have been developed with these ISDS systems. They're all in wetlands. They're all exceptions. So, you know, I'm going to be definitely harmed, but I'm here because of the side of the hill. I'm here because of those other 16 lots up the hill, and that's why we're here for the moratorium. We didn't come for 123. We came for Parkwood, Biscuit City, and Little Rest. And that's why you should do exactly what you said. You should do, do it based on comprehensive plan, which also deals with the problem of water. You should do the moratorium. If it takes you three weeks to put together the moratorium, then fine, do it. Do it. Why not? You've got a lot of taxes coming out of that part of town, and you've got excellent reason to do it, and you've got basically two reasons to do it. But the comprehensive plan does talk about flooding and damage to neighbors. It talks about the impact on the community. It talks about all these things. That's what it's all about. It's all about a comprehensive situation, so it's all-encompassing. I'm not going to talk anymore tonight, and I thank, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I think you asked, "Why not do it?" I think there is a good reason why we should not do it, because we're taking away property rights of people if we say we're declaring a moratorium, which is fine to do if we think it's the right thing to do. But we're trying to tell you, we honestly don't think that there's a dire situation and that we don't feel comfortable taking away property rights that people have on They have a right to build if they can build within our zoning laws and our comprehensive plan.
Ira Gross. I live on Springdale Drive. Fortunately, I escaped most of the problems of this rainfall, but my neighbor two houses north on Springdale did not, and her basement failed. Cracked, broke up. My benefit was her diesel fuel flowing down into my lot from her failed equipment. So that's the only thing I got, was some water in my front yard and the diesel fuel floating on top of it. Will she be able to live in that house? She hasn't moved out, but she's had a large debris collection outside. I haven't spoken to her personally to find out what she intends to do, but what are the implications for my property when a house two lots away from me has the basement failing? I don't think, we would not consider that a dire situation. Maybe it's just one out of eight houses on that one street, but it is dire for her, and it has results and effects for me.
Okay. What's the council's motion? Polly, I think you've actually put a motion to place it on file.
That was my motion, yeah. Was it seconded or seconded?
No, it was not.
It was not seconded.
Well, I will second it, and then in the discussion part, I think Steve said earlier that this will be forwarded to planning, that we could maybe look at a process to review this particular area in town.
For the 200-foot wetlands? That's what I was going to say, is what we talked about earlier.
Yeah, I mean, the 504 and so on and so forth, but...
I think what you could do, Jim, is to forward the petition to the planning board and request that they review, because the issues as far as advanced tech systems being used as a means of developing what used to be undeveloped lots is certainly an issue for the comp plan to evaluate, as well as the issue of where we, where we stand with the different lots that are getting special use permits and variances. But a lot of it's going to depend on the legal framework. I mean, I think everybody sympathizes with the concerns that are here.
Of course we do, yeah.
And are being expressed. Make sure it's, people are aware, this isn't the only area of town that's been adversely impacted by the storm. And I don't know if you've got the topography changes that you have in Kingston, that you're not going to have drainage issues that are going to be unresolvable for a 100-year storm. And even for a 25-year storm, there's difficulties. But when you have a grade change in 200 feet, or over nine feet in elevation change on some of these smaller lots, there is going to be runoff and there is going to be damage. I'm not minimizing anything that was said about the flooding. What my comment was, was that the wetlands and the stream widths were not changing as a result of the flooding, not that the flooding wasn't in fact impacting that neighborhood. So I guess my recommendation would be, send the petition and raise a report to the planning board. Ask that they take into consideration in the land use element of the comp plan what the impact is of those lots that were at one time not buildable, becoming buildable, as well as the ordinance regulations that pertain to distances from wetlands or perimeter wetlands at minimum. And if you do it that way, at least they can, they can begin that type of an analysis.
All right, so before we go to that, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Further discussion, so should we vote on that? Place on file? Want to vote? Are we going to vote on that, then?
And then make another amendment.
Right, right. So we want to clear that one off the table first. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, this is to place on file.
Why don't you just, why don't you just withdraw that motion? Whoever made the motion, why don't you withdraw it and make a new motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
And the seconder agrees?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. So now you're going to have a new motion.
A new motion, which is to send this to the planning board so that they can examine the situation and do the things that Mr. Alfred mentioned.
Specifically, even looking at the 504 section, too?
Specifically, looking at the zoning 504 rules and...
Impact.
And the impact on the property.
Okay. So they're moved?
And neighbors.
Moved in?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All right, I just want to state, too, again, nobody wants to minimize. I know you've had problems, like I said, we've been hearing this for years, and I think that we do need to look more at what we can do up in that quadrant of the town. But I do think the dire emergency situation, I don't think that we could act upon that. I would just want to make that clear, because, you know, even with the legal findings that, you know, the legal points that Mike brought up on that particular item. But again, it does open up to the whole town... That is the thing that keeps ringing in the back of my mind with this particular item. So, again, we can forward it on. I don't have any problems with that 100-foot to the 200-foot with the wetland review. And again, I think you have to give the council credit, because we have really been trying to be aggressive with the builders specifically on that lot 123 over the years. Again, I'm not happy with what ended up there, but, you know, DEM, you know, kind of took over control over there with that particular situation on that third go-round. Again, I wouldn't want to live in a house what it's, I don't know what it's going to look like, going to be right on the road over there. It is going to be ugly. He's shaking his head in agreement. But unfortunately, this is kind of what, you know, our hands are tied on some of these particular issues. It's a tough, tough thing. We feel for you. We know what's going on. I do wish 20 years ago, like you were saying, somebody did come in there and put sewers in, you know, and maybe we wouldn't be having these types of discussions. But, you know, these are the things that we can do for now to try to look at it and try to, you know, I guess, take care of the situation as best as we can over there. But again, we don't want to have, you know, that we take people's property rights away completely. You know, we will end up in court, and, you know, it's, it could happen all over the town, too. So, it is a concern for the council, certainly a concern for me. So, I hope that we're trying to be, you know, balanced here in what we're doing. So, all right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next, we move on to Communication M. The communication received April 21st, 2010, from Councilman James O'Neill, requesting adoption of a resolution in support of keeping Wakefield Elementary School open. Is received. Placed on file, and the town council further directs. What is the council's opinion on this one? Thank you. Coming? Okay. Jim, do you want to talk on this one first, or what would you like to do?
Yeah, just to mention briefly here, obviously, a number of options have been considered by the school committee, given the financial situation the state and the town could be facing. Unfortunately, Wakefield School has been a major part of that discussion. And I think at this particular point in time, being a businessman downtown, I consider Wakefield Elementary and the town of Wakefield as one. They're a business. They bring vibrancy and energy to the town. They bring business to the town. Parents come into town, whether they meet the children or remind themselves to do some shopping in town. I believe this is a situation where the town council needs to let the school committee know that whether it's an exemption, whether it's special status, but I believe the Wakefield School, because of the importance to this business community and the vibrancy of downtown Wakefield, should be off limits to any discussion for their reorganization of their schools. So, that's why my petition is here, and what I'm very much worried about, I don't want Wakefield becoming non-pedestrian, nor do I want Wakefield to become a ghost town. And that school is incredibly efficient. If you were a business, it would be a model of efficiency and production, almost batting 100% when you look at it. And we need the peripheral, what the peripheral brings, the neighborhood, what it brings to the town is so important in this case. I'd like the council to either advise the school committee that Wakefield School should be exempt or off any list for closure.
Okay. Jim, Polly?
Kathy, I think we all love the Wakefield School, but I think it's very important that we realize that the town council should stay out of school affairs as much as they can, because I think that there's a very definite line between the school committee does the school things and we do the municipal things. We have met with the school committee, and we've talked with them, and I think they know how we feel. I think they know many of us are very attached to Wakefield School for a number of reasons. The pedestrians, or our children went there, or we went there, but I would hate to tie in any way the school committee's hands by saying, "This is the right thing to do." Have you talked to anyone on the school board, Jim, about this?
No, I have talked to lots of parents, and I think we've been through this, even with South Road closed. I think it's obvious the importance that the parents in this community feel about the neighborhood. Elementary schools, I think, just overrides any potential that Wakefield should be considered for closing. And even to send the kids, you know, send a fifth-grade group over to Broad Rock or to Curtis Corner to join with another grade level is just absurd. All we're doing here is spreading out the children that should be in neighborhoods. And frankly, I think because of this importance, again, I think the importance to downtown Wakefield here is something that this council, we are the elected leaders of the town. We either can get a consensus here that we advise the school committee that this should be off limits, or the very last resort, or we don't. I think it's very simple, and I think the facts are very obvious, the importance of the school to the Wakefield neighborhood.
I would think that we have advised them how we feel. I think that we've had several meetings with the school.
Could you tell me, then, remind me again, what anyone beside myself said about the Wakefield School to the school committee?
Well, I think we don't like to tell them what to do. I really feel very strongly it's not our job, as I stated at the last meeting with the school committee. It's not our job to tell them what to do, any more than it's their job to tell us what to do. I would be very resentful if the school committee told us how to run anything.
We are the elected leaders. This is an asset...
They are the elected leaders, Jim.
Of schools. We are the elected leaders of this town. We have the final say with the final budget numbers. We are. And this is important from a standpoint of what leadership of the council should be looking at for the benefit of the community, Wakefield and the Wakefield Elementary School as one. This is too important to leave this up in the air, and as a discussion, I think it should be off the table.
I don't agree with you on that. I think that they have a perfect right to do. They've looked into it far more than we have, and I think they've studied it more. I think tomorrow night, they're having a meeting on this, and I think they'll discuss three or four suggestions for their budget, and I think that's their job. It's not ours. That's my feeling.
Hello?
Jim, I actually did attend the April 13th meeting, and as a taxpayer, I did express my concerns with trying to keep all of our schools, it's not just Wakefield Elementary, but our four elementary schools. It was very enlightening with a presentation that will be delivered tomorrow by our superintendent, Dr. Kristen Stringfellow, and she's supposed to address the different models and shoot those plans through different lenses. You said, "Did anybody here at the town council table actually address that?" I think with our joint town council-school committee meeting, I did refer back to the NASDAQ report, and I think I did address it, and I asked Kristen to also look at page 64 and 65 of the NASDAQ report to expand, as she does her presentation tomorrow, looking into some of the plans with long-range planning, the durability, the disruption for students. So, I think that the concerns were addressed by many town council members here at the table that night. I think that this resolution is a little premature, and I think that we need to get through tomorrow night's meeting with the presentation from the superintendent. I know I'm going to be there. I really hope that you do attend and maybe express your concerns at the mic tomorrow night. She's also going to be doing another presentation, looking at moving the Broad Rock. The fifth grade is over to Broad Rock, and I know that the school committee's going to be taking a vote on that. They've moved it from May 11th to May 20th. So, I can't support this resolution tonight. I really think that we need to give the respect to the superintendent. The Wakefield parents has asked for that information, and I think we need to wait until tomorrow night and see what transpires. But I do want to go on the record that, you know, I would like all elementary schools, our four, to stay open.
All right, so you've just changed from "all schools" to "all elementary schools" to stay open. Earlier in your conversation, you said "all schools," but now you mentioned "all elementary."
Elementary schools, right. Let me clarify that, the four elementary schools, right. This resolution just says Wakefield. I personally, as a taxpayer in this town, would like our four elementary schools to stay open.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate that. But just this elementary school has, just takes on a whole different relationship with our community, specifically, they're the biggest town in South Kingstown. And I'm also on record at multiple council meetings, I mean, heaven's sakes, I've said this up and down, my support for keeping Wakefield open, so I'm certainly on record on there.
Wakefield School definitely holds a very special place in my heart, Jim. But we need to get through tomorrow night with the superintendent's presentation.
And I think that the decisions they have to make are extremely difficult within this time. This is, as you know, this is a very difficult time with our budget, with their budget, and I think the choices they have are, I think we should not make it any more difficult than it already is. I think we should support the school committee, and I'm sure we'll be able to.
If I could just add, you know, with the discussions that happened with the town council and the school committee, the preliminary budget, I mean, was stated by the school committee that it does not include the closing of an elementary school. So, you know, I'm really hoping that that word, you know, we still have a lot of factors from the general assembly that, you know, we still have to face, and we have unknown figures. So, that was the last statement from the school committee.
And I certainly don't disagree with that. It's not on the table to close now, but I think we'd be fooling ourselves if we didn't realize that we've got some very, very difficult decisions, all of us, the town, as well as the school side here, coming at us, and not just this year, next year. And I just hate to keep going through this conversation. I want those parents to feel at ease, and that's why I put this resolution forward.
Who else? Yep. Do I have a motion?
Can there be public comment to this?
They can be public comment. I just didn't have a motion, so I don't know where we stand.
I'll move that we place this on file.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Ready for the discussion? Okay. And I'll just add that I think it is premature at this point, because tomorrow night is the meeting. We were all in a meeting just a couple of weeks ago with the school committee, and them saying that April 27th was the date that they were going to put out their different views. And so, I think it would be premature at this point to, you know, to forward this onto them when a decision hasn't even been made. So, again, it's putting the cart before the horse, so that's where I stand. And if anybody has any comments, they can come to the microphone and state their name for the record.
I appreciate, maybe I can use the gentleman's name, I appreciate Mr. O'Neill bringing this resolution forward to support Wakefield School. I've been to nearly every one of these meetings, and I think I'm hearing from at least one other town council member that it's been clearly expressed that Wakefield holds a special place, and I just want to say for the record that I really haven't heard that. I've heard very little dialogue between the town council and the school committee about these specifics. So, if you think you're giving direction to the school committee, I don't see it happening in the public meetings. I think that the town, I think that in some of these little ways, supporting the block parties and like that have been supportive of Main Street, but I think over the course of time, some of the actions that have been taken over the years have not been supportive of Main Street. There's a very large competitor up off of Route One that has had an impact on Main Street, and this seems like this would be another move against Main Street. I think that from what I saw at the last town council meeting, the merchants came forward. I guess it seemed unanimous that this would impact their business and the vibrancy of downtown. And I guess I don't really see that the town council is putting a large factor on that. And so, I hope that you will, you know, give it more deliberation and consideration and do weigh in in more of a way than you have. Thank you.
Ladies first. I'll make the decision.
Hi, my name is Rae Samosha. I just wanted to say a little bit to extend what Jonathan was saying, and I think that what I see, the town's role in this particular resolution, is that Wakefield School in particular has that tie to Main Street. So, this isn't telling the school committee what to do, or running the school committee's business, or any of that, because I don't see that as your role either. But I see taking it off the table and saying to the school committee that we've recognized the petition that we got from the merchants in town and the business owners who have said that this is going to affect our business. I have my 11-year-old daughter here with me tonight. She came because I've spent an awful lot of time at meetings, and she wants to see what it's all about. I've taken my kids over to Main Street, I can't tell you how many times, after school. And I think that's what this resolution is about. It's not about you guys getting involved in the school committee's business. It's about you guys thinking about Main Street, and I do see that as a town council role. Thank you.
My name's Justin Galant. I own a business on Main Street, Pier Pizza, and I'm also a town resident and parent of an elementary school child who does not go to Wakefield Elementary. So, I don't have the emotional ties, maybe, as some people who have spoken. I agree with the gist of what Mr. O'Neill has put forward here. I mean, a couple of things, so I guess I, and I have a question, and that would be with regards to his referring to it as a special status. Let's just say that you guys voted on this, and you approved special status. What does that mean?
I have no idea.
Yeah, as I said earlier, when I discussed it, an exemption, in other words, take Wakefield School off the table for any discussion with any closure by the school committee.
Okay. And would that just be for this year, or is that just a blanket, never, ever Wakefield Elementary School?
I want...
Not that I'm ever saying Wakefield Elementary should, but, I mean, there's, it's very open-ended, so that makes me nervous when I look at this. I mean, because I'm 100%, I believe Wakefield Elementary should remain open. I'm with you 100%, but I get nervous when I see something like this, that it doesn't say for this year, for this fiscal year, it doesn't say for 2010. It just says it's a special status, which I don't think we should single out any elementary school as a special status.
And I don't have a problem with that. I think what I wanted to do, and just in my discussion a few minutes ago, I wanted to take that off the table for this current year and in the next year's budget deliberations. And you're right, I should have put a time on there.
Okay. So, I do agree with you. And Ms. Edie, I disagree with the statement you made in that, that you guys deal with the municipal items, and the schools committee deals with the school items. I would contend that the school is a municipal item. I mean, I would contend that 80% of the budget, that would mean that the town council here is only in charge of 20% of the town's budget, which, while, yes, it is true, but overall, you guys have the final vote on it. So, I still, I would hope that as town council members, you guys view yourselves as 100% in control of the town's budget, correct?
We transfer it to the school fund.
Right. And if there was an issue with...
But as far as getting involved in the policy and what the school committee does, we do not do that. That is what Polly was saying.
I agree with you, absolutely. I don't think you should get into policy at all. However, this steps outside of policy, I think, correct?
It's their decision on what they're going to do with that particular, you know, school. Again, I think that it's premature, and again, you were at meetings, and you've read the paper, that they're making their presentation tomorrow evening. So, I would say that it would probably be best to hear all the different plans that are out there before, you know, approving this. And I do have an issue with that special status legislation. I mean, it's just, you know...
And the only other thing, Jim, again, I have, you know, as, you know, you're one of my representatives, is to, I think you're making a pretty bold statement about asking the general assembly to rein in spending.
Okay, well, why don't we stick on this one right?
Okay, well, I'm just going off this, because this is the, this is the, I mean, this is what you were voting on, was this whole thing.
Oh, he does have the General Assembly, I thought, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead to the next one, it does happen in there. There's a lot in these three, so...
I know, we're gonna get to, we're gonna talk more than we did about Biscuit City, I think, about this one, so... So, so that was my other concern, that you're trying to make a, a, a statement to the General Assembly, and, and I think something with this, the big thing is, from what I'm getting in, in all of this, is that, I, I think we need to take politics out of this. And, and I feel like I see a lot of it going on with town council members, with school committee members, with parents, with families, and I think that's real important. So in this whole thing, whether, you know, and, and I guess I'm asking you guys, and, and I'm asking the, the people in the town to, you know, maybe, uh, maybe I didn't necessarily agree with some of Jim's ideas in the past. However, some of the things he is putting forth here are good ideas. I would hope that the town council members also will look at that and say, okay, well, politically, we, we may differ, but if there's a good idea, a good idea out there, even though it may come from another political view, that we'll still look at these ideas. And, and I hope that, I guess, as a town resident and a taxpayer, I'm hoping you guys will be open. Your views are open, and you're not just... And of course, I know you're not gonna say anything about that right now, but I just, that's just my statement. I just hope that you guys are gonna be wide open to things. And yes, I agree with Ms. Whaley about, yes, I think tomorrow, we need to see what the school committee says before we jump the gun and we grant a, a special status.
I don't think there's any politics involved in waiting and seeing what the superintendent has been putting together.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Raeesa Mosher, and, um, well, I just wanted to say that I agree with Mr. O'Neill and how he said that, um, the Wakefield School is special to the whole town because it's special to my family, and I went there last year, and, um, I think I still enjoy going there to pick up my little brother, and, um, well, it's, uh, probably special to a lot of other people, so...
Thank you, you did a very nice job. Anybody else? Please state your name for the record.
Uh, good, good evening, David Caprio. A few of you have made mention of general assembly issues during this discussion.
There's more, so you might as well stay after this one, but go ahead.
Sorry?
There's more coming, so...
I'll be happy to address those when they come up.
Okay.
But as you, um, as you know, the, uh, I presume what you're talking about is the, is what the school aid would be, will be, moving forward, so that you can make, um, decisions as to how much money the town's going to have in, in funding the, not only the schools, but, but everything else. And it's important to, to understand that this year, you know, in the first time in the history of our, of our entire state, it appears as though we're going to finally pass a predictable school funding formula, so that your town council, not only here, but around the state, will be able to know what their funding is going to be. Hopefully, it'll be a formula that you may even be able to just, any citizen will be able to go online and plug the, uh, you know, the appropriate numbers in and get it. Now, um, I, we're just on the very last stage of finalizing a date, I believe, for Commissioner Gist to come down. I've been working with Colleen in Steve's office. Uh, so she can come down and present to the council and the citizens her formula, the rationale behind the, the factors that she's using, and the different information which she's putting in. But I would hope that, whether it's, whether it's her formula, or something close to it, or even something different, no matter what the formula is that we pass, and her formula certainly is not, uh, super friendly to this town, as it is to some others. And cer- and we are at the State House, uh, fighting to, you know, to protect all of our, our, the places which we represent. But I would hope that no matter what the formula is, that i- in the end, the decision will come down to the school committee and your budget as to what happens to Wakefield School. And I would, and I would hope that Jim's intent, Councilman O'Neill's intent in this resolution that he's presenting, is followed through with, what he's trying to do. And that is to keep the school open. I've had the opportunity to go to the, the two spaghetti dinners they had two or three weeks ago, and, and interact with the teachers and the students and the families, and it really is a special place. It's just, as, as we just heard, it's a special place not only for the students. Um, to disrupt that experience of going to their local neighborhood school, I think would be a disservice to the, the children. And, and the number one priority for, of course, our community and for the schools is to educate the children in the best possible environment. I would love to be here tomorrow night, and if we finish up at the State House early enough, certainly I'll try to shoot down. A few weeks ago, when you were having the other hearings, was quite a busy week at the State House, as, um, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, we didn't leave the building until all around midnight, and on Tuesday night, we were there almost till 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. So unfortunately, wa- I wasn't able to be here for the other meetings. Um, I understand there was some discussion about, uh, the legislative initiatives, and, uh, I'll try to make myself available as much as possible while we're not in, in session. But with that school funding formula, I think it will provide a great resource, and with some predictability again, as to what, um, you know, the type of funding that would be able to come through all the cities and towns throughout Rhode Island. And then it's up to the school committees and the councils to decide how to best allocate it, and, um, and how to use it to the best, to the best, uh, services that they can provide.
Dave, I gotta, I gotta tell you, it, it's gonna crush this town. And it, and you just, if by your own words, going to pass and use it as a great resource, that's a lot of money that's gonna come out of the town, and that, that means that this town's education is gonna change, um, very drastically. Um, so the school committee, you know, is under pressure now. Can you imagine when 3.8, or whatever the exact number's gonna fall out to be, comes to this town in a reduction of, of, of aid? People are concerned now, e- everybody's gonna be concerned. It's, it's a really, a huge, huge, education's not gonna be what people are used to. Um, that's why we have been so vocal in trying to get, you know, Steve has been up and talked to the, and Alan have been talking to the finance on the, on the, um, House side, working on with Sue now for a date with, to go up with the finance people on the, on the Senate side. Um, this is a huge, huge concern for this town council, because, um, you know, there's just, that's a lot of money. So, I mean, I can't use it as a great resource, I'm just gonna know I'm gonna be significantly impacted as a parent of schoolchildren in this town. And you say it's going to pass, and I, I don't doubt that it is going to pass, but everybody better be well aware of what the impact is gonna be in this town. It's gonna be drastic. Drastic, drastic. We're dealing with just numbers now, never mind 3.8 million dollars coming out of our budget. What, what do you think is gonna happen to the town of South Kingstown? So, I mean, you gotta be as fervent and fight as much as you possibly can for the town of South Kingstown, even if it falls on deaf ears. Uh, we need our representatives to do this, uh, because, um, i- it's, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna look completely different, never mind even the Wakefield Elementary School. Who knows what else we're gonna have to do in this town? Um, it leaves us with no other option. So, um, you know, I appreciate you coming in front of us, but it is, and I don't mind just, you know, Dr. Gist coming down here, um, 'cause I'd say the exact same thing to her and any other legislator who was in front of us. Um, this is what we need, and that's what I'll say May 17th, when you come down and sit in front of us. We need our legislators to fight as much as we can, or at least make this formula more fair, um, that we can. We've, we've talked about this, that the two different drivers in there, for the poverty drivers, really impact the town. Um, even if we can get in there and talk and maybe have it, like, reduced by, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, I'm not saying that, you know, we're not gonna be affected, you know, by, you know, your fighting, but to at least make it a fairer number that's coming at the town of South Kingstown. This is, it's in a very, that's what I'm most concerned about. And I mean, we're going through the budget process, and it's a process, but that school funding formula coming at us, that is just frightening to me. And it should be frightening to everybody in, in this, in this audience, because it's gonna drastically change everything. Again, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow night, with the superintendent has to look at the 3.8 million dollars coming out of us, or whatever it's gonna be, and whatever the impact. That's huge, huge, huge. So you, if you could, Dave, whatever you could do up there for the town of South Kingstown, we would really, really appreciate it.
If I could just clarify, I believe the, uh, the leaders of both chambers have vindicated that it is a priority to pass a formula. Not necessarily Commission to Gist's formula. And she presented her formula. Now, over the last few years, there have been other formulas presented. Uh, last year, Representative Vigella from Providence, who headed the commission to, to do a school funding formula, presented a formula. And that would have taken away, oh, a little more than half of South Kingston's school budget.
All of it, all of it.
I mean, all of, sorry, all of Narragansett and all of South Kingstown's.
And that was stopped, and this one has legs, and even with this one, it's concerned. Again, we just want it to be fair. We know it's not gonna be stopped, but a little, a little more fair. And so far, hers is the only formula that seems to have any type of legs, and, and this is the one that seems to be moving through. Is there another one that's coming out? Because it would be nice to see what those numbers are.
Well, the finance committee, again, has hearings on them, and then they, uh, consult with the Senate, and it's through the budgetary process, as you described. But, um, again, I, I didn't wanna give the, I didn't wanna give the impression that, that a decision has been made to pass Commission to Gist's formula. It has not. She has presented her formula, and, and that's the one, I guess, that's, that everybody's familiar with. But, um, you know, the, the reductions over the period of time, it's over, and it's not all at once, but over the period of time, is, is a significant number. And, and myself and, and the other reps from, uh, from this area are very concerned about that, and we are up there fighting for it. But, um, again, I can't stand here today and tell you what the formula's going to be.
No, I don't, I don't expect you to, I'm just saying, fight for us.
But no matter what the formula is, and, and we all hope that it's going to be, uh, you know, something that South Kingston can work with and, and be able to continue on as, as you want to. But I would hope that, that the closure of Wakefield School is, is not, um, would be something that would be looked at as a last priority. And not necessarily tied directly to, you know, the state school funding formula, because, you know, I think, you know, that there's, if you reexamine the entire budget of the, of the entire town, along with the entire school budget, uh, I would hope that closing a school would be, uh, to, close to the bottom of the priority list. Thank you.
Kathy? Okay, let me go with Ella first.
I, I just wanna say, David, I know you've been instrumental in trying to set up this meeting with, with Deborah Gist, and I'm really looking forward to that, being in the field of education myself. I know that, looking at prior funding formulas, and I'm not asking for an answer today, and I will bring this up, um, the night that we meet with Commissioner Gist, um, if that date will get finalized for May 19th. Looking at funding formulas from multiple years ago, there was like a maximum amount that a school department could use, and I can't recall what the terminology was that was placed on that, whether it was hold harmless or... But, it, you know, I just wanna reiterate what Kathy said, anything that you can do to support and less polarize the school districts, so that it's more equitable. Um, and I do agree that it, it will help us to plan for the future, so... And the race to the top money, you know, if we're, we're still in, still in the running for that, and that needs to happen, so... I do thank you for, you know, being instrumental in setting up this meeting with Commissioner Gist. And I know that you've worked with Steve and Alan with different scenarios and to get the information out, and and I encourage all of, you know, the people in South Kingstown to keep in contact with their legislators, because really, that's where the, where it's gonna happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ella.
All right, Jim.
Yeah, David, um, again, I'll echo, uh, thank you for your efforts. Hopefully, she will be able to come to South Kingstown. I even emailed the manager's office back, saying I would treat her to dinner, if that's what it took, or a cab ride home. And I certainly know, I spent, uh, oh, ten years ago, they were, they've been talking about a formula for years, and all of a sudden, the worst kind of economic time, you know, all of a sudden, it's on our lap. I just wish, and this happens all the time, whether it's university, if, if only, if only you'd passed just the preliminary formula out to a few of the managers, mayors around the state. Just to have a Barrington jump above what we'd be receiving in South Kingstown, the formula has them going to five million, we'd, we'd wind up half of our nine and a half, four and a half million. The point is, they've got almost a 50% um, higher, 50% more than South Kingstown, higher family income. I don't need to know free lunch, affordable housing, anything else to know, something's wrong with the formula. All you had to do was pass it by a few of us who can just reason, just look at this and say, wait a minute, something's out of balance here. Yeah, I mean, that's all we needed to do, and, and I wish, um, more of the committees of the General Assembly, now and then, you know, the, the fever strikes and you gotta move on it, but sometimes, just let a few folks, Steve's been in business for 30 years doing this, their Mayor McKee's been doing a few years, just pacify a few of us, just for, the litmus test is something totally out of balance, something unreasonable here. And, and, and I think we could be very helpful from there. We don't even need to get into this Brown University square root, root of, and quadruple ex- exponential roots to come up with a formula, that's nuts. It's so easy to do a proper formula with just reasoning. So, that's all I'm asking, whether it's EFF or something else that comes along. Sometimes you need it to pass it by the folks whose ears are next to the public out here who are really, really hurting. That's my two cents.
Jim, I, I couldn't agree with you more, and that's why I, I, I know the concern of Commissioner Gist's formula, and that's why we've been working to bring her down here. Because it's her formula, it's not ours.
Yeah.
It's not ours until it comes before us and is voted on. So before it gets to that point, we are doing exactly what you are suggesting. Bringing her, leading the horse to the water, so to speak.
I, I just didn't want it to leak. I didn't want it to leak front page for us.
So that you can have that opportunity to, um, you know, to ask her why she's using the square root and maybe not a multiplication table.
All right, thank you.
Professor Brown who made that one up, but go ahead, Polly.
David, thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight. Also, we are the only state in the Union without an educational formula. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, keep working at it, just get us a good one.
Thank you, Polly.
Any legislator who comes in front of a town, town council that's losing money is gonna take the heat, so I, I do appreciate you coming, but, you know, it is a very, very big concern for us, you know. We can't control what they do with their money, but, you know, when you have to give less to them, and then, you know, to raise taxes, it's just, especially in these economic times, I just, it's, it's painful to do. It's very painful to do, so anyways, thank you, David.
We're in the same boat there, and, you know, we've been, in the worst few years now, we've been able to not, um, you know, have, resort to raising the broad-based taxes, and and I know that puts the councils, and the, the town councils and city councils, in a difficult situation, because a lot of the cuts are coming upstream, so to speak. You know, we're cutting, we're, we're, we're cutting what we give you in a lot of respects, but with the, um, with the, with the most recent, um, supplemental budget that we, that the House passed when we, I said we were there until after two, that's what we were doing a week ago, uh, you know, Tuesday. We were on break this past week, but the Tuesday before. You know, the, the governor's budget eliminated the car tax payment, the third and fourth quarter, the governor's supplemental proposal. And the, the House, you know, made the third quarter payment, as you know, and, and the, and the supplemental that we passed, that the Senate has since rejected, we restored about seven-eighths of what the, the fourth quarter payment would have, would have been, rather than eliminating the whole thing as the governor had proposed. So we, we understand that, and we wanna provide as much as we can within the restrictions that we have. You know, we, there's no endless amount of money, and unlike the federal government, we just can't print it. The Constitution tells us, we have to balance the budget every year, when we can't borrow money to do it. So that's the situation that unfortunately is presenting the state of Rhode Island right now, and where, you know, we have to, in the next, you know, few weeks, we have to make up all the, uh, the shortfall for this current year that we're in, and then before June 30th, you know, several hundred million more. That's the reality of where we are right now. So whether it's a school funding formula, whether it's reimbursement for the tax, uh, the car taxes, whether it's city and town aid, we have to, we have to create, um, you know, savings, or raise taxes, or do both, to make up several hundred million dollars. And, and, you know, so it's not a rosy picture as we move forward. And, and we all have to, uh, you know, realize, we have to, we try to realize the seats that you're in, and we know that you try to realize the seats that, the situation that we're in.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak on this? Please state your name for the record.
Bob Trager. First time I've been back in quite a while. I feel I've gotta comment on this a little bit. I would think, I don't think you're gonna like it, maybe what I'm gonna say right now, but I think, I'm guessing that the formula, whatever this formula is, is supposed to try to equalize the benefits of state monies to the different school districts that need the most help. I'm guessing at that. If I'm wrong, correct me. Well, I think a long time ago, I've said, I've mentioned my concerns about education in general, and I still have them. In fact, they're more, In fact, they're more, more now than they've ever been because the whole country, as the governors of every single state have indicated, I've listened to programs on that, I've listened to the Senate, I've listened to the House, I've listened to C-SPAN, I've listened to people talk about this stuff. We're in trouble in this country and instead, and, and when we're in the most trouble with education, it's, it's always boils down to the almighty dollar, but it isn't only the almighty dollar that makes education. There's a lot of other factors that need to be looked at. I've heard, I don't know how many people state that we need to revolutionize our, our entire educational system in this country and, and make it less a babysitting institution and more of a real education. I'm not going to go on on this because, but I, I just think that it's too bad it always boils down to just money, money, money. And now when the whole country's in trouble, when we need education more than we've ever needed it, we need to improve it, we need to do all kinds of things, all we're worried about, now, now we're, we're in the situation where we're going to cut back. It's, it's crazy, the whole country's crazy right now. And I, I, I hope that the politi, something was mentioned here about, you know, the, this political stuff. I, I, I hope, I, I don't see much of it. I'm going to be starting to come to the meetings again and I, I hope I don't get that feeling. I hope you people are all thinking along the line, and I believe this particular committee is pretty close to doing that, but once in a while it isn't. These are important things and I'm, my last comment is, well, the only one I was going to make initially is, I go along with Jim's idea there, I think you do have the power to do, uh, what he asked, uh, as far as keeping the school open. I, I'll go along with waiting until tomorrow night, I'm going to go. I'm going to see what, what it's all about tomorrow night. But, uh, at the same time, you are the school, you are the, uh, the main thrust of the pulse of the community, I think. This is the group that's got it on their shoulders. And, uh, if we're going to raise taxes, I'm sorry, I guess we're going to have to do it. Because there's certain things that have to be done. And educating our children and not shuffling them around and, and putting them in any little cubby hole that is a couple of dollars cheaper is not the way to do it.
Thank you, Bob. Do you want to clarify that that meeting's at the high school? Yeah, auditorium, yeah. Bob, for those, just to clarify, don't come here tomorrow night, it's at the high school auditorium. Okay? All right, so you, you won't, won't get us here. Um, and it will be the school committee, he'll be deciding. Okay, any other? Please state your name for the record.
Certainly. Good evening. Laura Leclair. First off, I just want to thank Mr. Caprio for coming down, coming down to be here when, obviously, he's very busy. You know, I, I just, one thing I just want to address and, and nothing else, um, I, I really appreciate Mr. O'Neal putting this before, before you for consideration. I understand you thinking it's premature and maybe the cart before the horse. I have one question as to tomorrow, the, um, tomorrow night, they're going to have these four, um, scenarios, these four considerations on whether to close, um, Mattoonik, close West Kingston, close Curtis Corner, or close Wakefield. And at that meeting, there's a very good potential that one of them is going, the committee members are going to make a motion for one of those scenarios to occur. If, say, that scenario was that they, uh, want to close the Wakefield Elementary School, what happens to this resolution? Based on your motion and what you're, you're doing with it now, not acting on it, just tabling it?
It, it will, it will be tabled. If Mr. O'Neal wants to put something in afterwards, you know, he has the, he has the right to put another petition forward, but at this point, uh, that's where it stands.
So, there would be no action on it?
Right.
Okay. The other, uh, point I just wanted to make is that I think that, um, it is incumbent upon the town council to, uh, act on any situation which would impact the village of Wakefield, because that's what we're talking about here. And when you look at your comprehensive plan and, and mainly, uh, the 1992 comprehensive plan, uh, looks Section V, natural and cultural resource element, J three, which is the revitalization of Main Street. That that is something that this town council has to be concerned about. And if, if Main Street is the heart of Wakefield, you're ripping out part of it when you take out the Wakefield Elementary School because it, it affects businesses. You, you've seen the petitions, these business people, they just don't sign it, you know, just to sign it, they, it is going to affect, um, Wakefield. And, I mean, it says here in your revitalization of Main Street, "Main Street has been the traditional center of American communities, serving as the commercial and awful social focus of town." As consumers abandon Main Street for the malls, the vitality of downtown businesses and the community identifi, identity they foster fades, this situation has been occurring in South Kingston. Strong development in the area is shifting the commercial focus of the town away from Main Street area of Wakefield to traditional commercial center of South Kingston. Action must be taken to preserve the Main Street area of Wakefield as the traditional commercial center of South Kingston." And this is in your comprehensive plan and I think as the town council, that it's incumbent upon you to, to act, to make sure that this happens. And i- if you think that, um, by closing Wakefield Elementary, it's not going to impact the village of Wakefield, I think that, that is a far cry from really what's going to happen. I don't want to see, I grew up in Narragansett, there was no center of town. There was the south side and the north side. I lived in the south side and I don't want to see that happen to Wakefield now or South Kingston. So, that's really all I have to say. I mean, I know you're not going to make a decision, I just thought that I would put forth my opinion that it is incumbent upon you and the leaders of this town to enforce your comprehensive plan, your, your ideal as to what you want to happen in this town.
And we do do that, too. There's also pots about that, about sprawl, um, you know, and that's why it's kept in, in that area of this Peace Dale, there's the, the Wakefield, there's a special management district and we have the residential areas. I mean, there's a bigger, broader picture that we put here. We have, we don't have a split tax rate for our businesses, so we do try to be very business friendly, too. And even with this last, um, assessment that went through, most of the, it was about an average of about seventeen percent that the House's values were affected, the businesses were less, it was seven percent. So, even with the tax increase that could come to the town, even the 1.5, it's going to be a bigger hit on the businesses, too, for their taxes because their assessments did not go down as much as, as the Houses, too. So, that's a concern for the town council that we also have in the back of our mind. There are a lot of pots of the comprehensive plan and we don't want to see downtown Wakefield die, I, I've been on this council for eight years now, working on the comprehensive plan to make sure that Wakefield does stay a vital area. It's just, I just wanted you to point out, there are other things that we, that are involved in the comprehensive plan. You can't just take one little, little portion of that and read that without realizing what we have as far as not having sprawl with all the businesses, so it doesn't look like a town like, like Narragansett.
I, I understand that.
And, and again, you know, give us credit for, again, this, the, not having the split tax rate for the businesses in the town. But again, it could hurt them, the impact, even the 1.5% increase in taxes, it's going to be, you know, a, a bigger burden on, on the businesses in the town. I just want to give a big, you know, big picture view of what's going on, too. So, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, none of us want to see Wakefield go. We've been working hard to build up Peace Dale, too, you know, over the years. So, that's not what our intent is. Again, tough decisions have to be made. Again, it is going to be tomorrow night, so I do think that the cart is before the horse here. Tough decisions are being made all over the state of Rhode Island when it comes to schools and, um, you know, other school, other towns have seen schools closing, too. So, it's, I, I don't envy the school, you know, committee and what, what, where they are right now and I've said that at other meetings. It is tough decisions. But again, I just want you to, Laura, just to realize, you know, what, what else is in the comprehensive plan that we look at, too.
I, I know.
Regarding to try to be business friendly.
Right. I, I understand that. I just pointed out that there is a provision for revitalizing Main Street.
Yeah, and we've been revitalizing.
Main Street's not in Peace Dale. Main Street is in Wakefield.
I'm well aware where it is and we've been working on revitalizing it for years. Actually, our downtown has, you know, even with this economic impact, you know, that we've been going through, has been pretty vital over the past, you know, several years. There are a couple of businesses that are, that are off right now and I think other businesses are moving right into, to some of them. So, I mean, we're very lucky in that regard and we'd like to keep it that way. Regardless of what the Wakefield situation, we, we'd still like to see downtown Wakefield stay as vibrant as it is. The council is not adverse, is not against that at all and not against the businesses.
Well, I, I truly hope that is true because if it transpires that tomorrow they were closing Wakefield, then I think you can have a situation.
My concern in, um, keeping the school committee, making the decisions for the school, their primary concern is for the education of our children in town. And that really is what they are concerned about more than anything else. And if they decide that one school should close and, and one school should not, it's because they think that would be better for the education of our children. They're not doing it because of another issue such as business. And, and that's what I want them to do. That's why I don't want the town council to be saying, you do this, you do that. It's up to them to make the decisions on the schools because they're the ones who really have our children's best interest. That's the one thing they have to worry about. We have a whole slew of things, promoting business, getting good roads, keeping the beaches open, we have all sorts of things, the town council does. But that is their one primary issue, to get a good education for every child in our towns.
I, I, I can't disagree with that, but I, I will note that the last meeting that I attended, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, pointed out that moving the fifth graders was first something they wanted to do because of an educational model, that it would be better for the fifth graders. But then he was, uh, hemming and hawing about how now it may be a financial decision to move the fifth graders because of the shortfall with the funding formula and, um, I, I suppose this COLA issue and that now it might be a necessity to move the fifth graders in order to facilitate closing down a school. And this is where they're going, in my opinion.
You know, we, we honestly have to consider that in this day and age. We're having a terrible time. Uh, I'm sure this isn't news to you, the budget is a very difficult thing to work with this year. We're having to make all sorts of decisions we would rather not make.
I can't disagree with any of that. I mean, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I hope you see what I'm saying.
Of course I do, yes.
You know, I, I, maybe I'm biased, I, my two kids go to Wakefield Elementary School, but I really see the village of Wakefield.
Wonderful school, yeah.
Failing if the Wakefield Elementary School goes. That's just my opinion. And, um, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, Laura, just about every business signed a petition in downtown Wakefield. Very few of them still have children in any of the schools. This shows you how important this is. And you read all the particular chapters and verse, what, over the years I've quoted. There's one thing to pretend and there's another thing to step to the plate here. And I think this council needs to step to the plate and tell the school committee in no uncertain terms, Wakefield is off the table for next year, period.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you.
We need some guts here and there are none. This is a town-wide asset and Wakefield is probably one of our most important assets and we're failing. Matter of fact, what will happen with this, uh, resolution will just go in the wastepaper basket. I'm sure he wanted to get a motion to have them vote on it.
That's unfortunate. Thank you.
We have a motion already on, and it's been seconded. Yeah, and we're in discussion.
No, to place it on.
Please state your name for the record.
Susan Kimmerly. I just, I do want to thank Mr. O'Neal for taking a stand and supporting Wakefield School. I, I support all that these people have said and I appreciate Mr. Caprio being here. Just to kind of get the conversation started for future years, because it sounds like these are going to be difficult times for the foreseeable future. I just wonder if we might start to get the word out, maybe from town councils, state reps and school committees to start urging, maybe at the federal level, a new dynamic. I, I just think, um, and I know, again, this isn't quite the provenance of the town council, but I think it all trickles down from the dollar value of any town budget. As a teacher and a parent, it troubles me that the latest trend is a race to the top, that there's a competition, uh, like a foot race for one school to prevail over another school, another, one state over another state. And just maybe as we do head into the foreseeable future of difficult times, excuse me, I keep saying I'm not going to get up and speak because I feel like I'm having a stress test. But it just seems like maybe that's where the conversation needs to start going. We're kind of back and forth here like a ping pong table and there's no more money to work with in our own dynamic of the state of Rhode Island. But if we can maybe start urging the federal level to, you know, put their money where their mouth is if they want our system to be really pro education, maybe it shouldn't be a race to the top, a competition with a winner and a loser. And if maybe we could have a resolution that goes to all the town councils throughout the state and all the school committees throughout the state and every state representative throughout the country, maybe they'll start to listen. So, I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you. Jim?
Just in response to that, uh, you're absolutely right, uh, from the federal level, the feds will tell us they have helped us. Uh, it's called stimulus money. And unfortunately, the states used a lot of it this year, a lot of it next year, mainly to plug a lot of, uh, deficit holes with a, a lot of areas. And, uh, and our great fear here is the council, town manager, and I'm sure the school committee, our great fear is, uh, we actually have to plan out two or three years that, that money may not be available. So, yes, we were happy for a year or two, but it came at the worst possible economic times and, uh, now that may disappear. So, so you're certainly right, but unfortunately, uh, situation is just working against us everywhere.
Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, Roland Benjamin. The, these issues in this, this particular resolution is, is obviously triggered by some funding contingencies that haven't quite happened yet. It's, I'll say some of the things that I've said before, um, in years past about different things, but I, I, I'd like to ask that, that maybe look at taking some real, direct action in the form of, uh, trying to support the financial aspect of this, not necessarily, while I agree in, 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 uh, content with, uh, what Councilman O'Neal has, has proposed, I, I think, I also agree with, um, Justin about the sort of wide-ranging nature of it. But the, the issues really are, are funding specifically as far as I see the town council, um, role in this. And, uh, I'd like to just add, you know, resubmit some of the same ideas, but now with a different, uh, um, different intent. I'd, I'd like to see a reconsideration of, of the collection rate that, that's used when formulating the budget and, and use a ninety-nine percent collection rate and, assumption, at, at, at least for, if not a regular practice, uh, something that could be used to, to, to bridge it, uh, one year to a next contract negotiations that might be, um, enable the school to stay open. There's, I'd like to see maybe a formal request to, to, to analyze some of the, um, effects of the national healthcare reform that might, that, how they're going to impact our budgets in terms of adding dependents negatively and how, how they may help us and some of the reimbursements for, uh, early retirees that, that are offered healthcare, uh, benefits. I, I, I would like to see some more, I, I appreciate the council president's, uh, tone in speaking with Representative Caprio. I, I'd like to see something more formal, uh, as a resolution, um, in the, in the supplemental budget hearings. There was some pretty explicit amendments about the cost of living adjustments that, that were made and two of our representatives voted, uh, against some of the recommendations that, that may have eased up some of this potential nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that, that, that were added. I think there may have been a different vote had there been some kind of resolution on the table from the council and possibly the school committee. I, I'd like to see resolutions that, that talk about delaying implementation of the funding formula, even though it's not in... even though it's not in legislative form yet. Anything that may come down that formally directs our general assembly to help out in this process. And then there was a few resolutions that were, or a few letters a few weeks ago that were on the agenda, a request for resolution coming from Rhode Island statewide coalition, Harry Staley, and another from, I believe, the Board of Regents, or I'm not sure. The second one came from, both were filed immediately. I think those have longer-term implications to the sustainability of a four elementary school model, and I think they've been kind of bypassed. So this one resolution that we're talking about is directed at the school committee, but I think there's other, there's more that can be done. And to try to find this and free up some of this funding that is kind of, I realize and I've seen you work well together with the school committee, but I really feel like there's a lot of, it's not my fault, kind of going around right now. And I'd just like to see some direct action to try to free up the parts of the equation that you do have control and obligations to. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Anybody else? Okay. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Tansey. And I guess in regard to the closing of Wakefield Elementary School, my family and I moved here a couple of years back with the intention of living in a downtown area with a very walkable feel to it. Wakefield actually has a walkability score. We went online and checked this out. And it is a result of the ability of my family to walk to work, walk to grocery stores, walk to an elementary school. And all of these things, I think, have incredible value to a community. It certainly what attracted us to Wakefield. Someone earlier spoke about the necessity for courage when facing this issue. And I agree. I think these are incredibly difficult decisions that have to be made. And I think too much of the pressure has fallen on the school committee and on the town council. And I think the responsibility lies a little more upstream. I believe that the lack of courage has come from the state legislature and from the governor's office. There's no doubt that we're facing unprecedented difficulties this year and for the foreseeable future. And the cuts to aid to city and town, cities and towns have been devastating throughout the state. And the past two years, we've sustained pretty significant cuts in our town. And looking at what the state budget office proposes and what they have to say about this, it's not that these are expenditure problems. You know, this is from the budget office, the first quarter report that they released. And they're saying that 87% of the deficit that we're facing now at the state level is a revenue problem. So we need to get creative in finding new sources of revenue. We need to get creative in solving this problem at the root. We're not bringing in as much as we need to. It's not that we're spending more necessarily. According to the office, it is only a shortfall. It's not necessarily that we are overspending. I've outlined a number of possibilities where we could look for new revenue sources. And, you know, I spoke about them a couple of weeks ago, wrote a letter to the editor regarding them, and have an op-ed that should be hopefully appearing in the local paper this week. And I just, I see the failure of courage coming more upstream and from the governor's office and from the state legislature and their failure to act on these problems. And I wholeheartedly support maintaining Wakefield Elementary School as an open school. And one thing that has not been mentioned this evening that I feel might be a solution, and I know that the superintendent will address this tomorrow evening, is the tiers, the four-tier level of school that we currently have. And I think that consolidation and bringing it down to a three-tier school system can really be the solution that we all would feel best about. I don't know about how that is going to translate into the numbers working into the three tiers, but I certainly hope that that will be the solution that the school committee eventually looks to adopting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address? Jonathan, this gentleman hasn't spoke for us yet, I should say. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Chris Roman from Wakefield. I guess I'm sort of just getting into this a little bit, but I guess I had a couple of questions. One is, or assumptions that you could validate. One is that 80% of the town's budget nominally is tied up with the school committee? Is that true?
Yes.
You sign off on that budget?
We transfer the school funds to the school.
So the school committee comes up with a plan for the year, and you eventually sign off on it?
There's some discussion back and forth on, you know, budgetary issues throughout the year, and then we transfer the school funds to them, yes.
Okay. I guess my concern is, you know, this is a problem now, and as you brought up with the funding formula, we're probably at the beginning of a long set of problems, more so than at the end. And I don't think anybody is in a particularly good situation, you guys trying to deal with the town and the budget, of which 80% of it is tied to the school. The school board has to make a bunch of unpleasant choices. I agree with Mr. O'Neill's wanting to put some strong language here and protect Wakefield School because it is viable. My concern is, I guess it does look a little premature, but I think we could put some strong thing forward that ties the school board's budgeting to your say, in the sense that maybe we don't want to follow the Washington model of the congressional budget office, but the, it seems that if we instituted something like this in the town, I'm not sure where the town's budget predictions come, but I would like to see that the school board's decisions are bound to some economic transparent measure of the town's economic health. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I think that's within the scope of your jurisdiction. So if we can consider something like that, perhaps, I don't know if that's something Mr. O'Neill could move forward, or how do you change resolutions or bring something else. I guess that's sort of my concern, is that at the end of the day, the chips are going to fall, and there may be reasons that Wakefield Elementary has to close. Personally, I have two kids who are going to be there in a few years. I would like to see it open. I support all the viability arguments for downtown Wakefield. But at the end of the day, I would just like to know that due diligence was done, and that we assessed this on a longer-term issue, that yes, someone here independently verified that the economic status of the town, for all decisions the school board could possibly make, was at least vetted. We don't want to look at it naively and say, "We can come up with this town congressional budget office if it was, and we can just skew the waiting so we win and we keep Wakefield open." I don't think we want to be that sort of naive about it. But I guess that's my concern, is I would urge the town to consider those things, and that you do have that power, because the economic viability of the town is in your court. And it's linked to the school whether you like it or not. So I guess that's really all I have to say.
We do look at indicators, and we do start the budget year. Just for next year, if you want to get involved early, we start with the capital budget. We look at all the brick and mortar, you know, properties throughout the town, budget on a six-year plan of, you know, what we're going to do with all the brick and mortar properties, including all the schools, every road, every dam, everything you could possibly think of in this town. So that's where the process starts. That is moved into our budget. The town manager puts together a preliminary, a town manager's budget. There is a review. You can get the town budget, or you can go online, or you can look at it. There's a review of the economic, really, indicators of where the town stands, population-wise and median income, the house values of the houses. We are also guided by state caps on funding, and what we can raise the taxes to. And we also kind of, we have those as guidelines, but we also have to look at the economic stability. We look at numbers. We've looked at the unemployment rates of the people in the town. I think last time we looked at it, Steve, what we, what we were for the unemployment figures for the town of South Kingstown.
The unemployment?
Yeah, the unemployment figures, what we were looking at as far as.
Last time, I'm not sure.
Last time, yeah, yeah, 10%. So, you know.
I guess my concern is, is it possible to draft some new resolution that says, "The town will sign off on the school committee's decision if the following occurs," and that what has to occur is an audit of their four situations. And you guys don't sign on the line and say that's going to go forward until this condition is met. And that is some reasonable five-year projection of consequences of any given action they make. I don't, maybe that may exist right now, I don't know. But I'm just, as a way of forcing sort of due diligence, I think.
Go ahead.
That's not the way the law is set up.
Yeah, I was going to say.
A school committee is elected in each town. The school committee is responsible for the care, maintenance, operation, and planning for the school system. The school committee is responsible for the preparation of a budget. The only thing that the town council is dealing with is the tax transfer that goes to the school department. The school, the town council doesn't have the legal right, under the constitution of the state of Rhode Island or the laws of the state of Rhode Island, to dictate to the school committee how they run the school program. So let's make sure we understand. It's not a case where the council can say, "You can do this, 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 and this." The only thing the council can say is they control the purse strings. And they can say to them, "If we don't like what you're doing, we may not give you sufficient dollars to be able to do all the things you want to do." But they operate under a gross budget, which means that they are able to spend all that they take in. They can, they can put together a budget today, and they can amend it tomorrow if they want. They can change the procedures that they wish to operate with. That's what is set up under law. It's not a case where the council is going to tell the school committee how they're going to set up their educational program. It can't be done that way under existing laws. The only way it can be controlled in that manner is through the purse strings in terms of how much money they're going to provide. So it's not a case where they're going to be able to legislate to the school committee how they operate the school system or what the school configuration or grade organization is. That's not the way the laws are set up in the state of Rhode Island. I don't think they're set up that way in any state.
I trust everything you just said. I don't know the particulars of it. My overall point, though, is just that I would like to see, make sure that the concerns you have about the viability are actually fleshed out and somehow come into play or at least brought up. That's all I have.
Well, that's what we try to do. And again, we have our part of the budget that we do, and they have their part of the budget that they have. And we work together. We talk, you know, on discussions on, you know, the budgets and where we are, like I was talking about that whole financial picture of the town. And we kind of, you know, go from there. But again, they are in control. They are elected. We are not elected school body. We are the elected town council. And they deal with the program. They are more in-depth with the program and the decisions that have to be made than the town council is. You know, this thing that, you know, we control, you know, what they do. We can have discussions with them, but we can't tell them what to do. It is their decision. They are more in-depth with the policy and the issues that are going on at the school committee level than we are. That's their job to be. And we know every screw that's used in our, you know, septic treatment systems and keeping our roads, you know, together. So it's two separate things that we, they bring in their budget, and we can approve the transfer of the taxes to the school budget, to the school fund. So it's a very involved process. You can't come in on the, you know, the 11th floor. It's, by all means, get involved and, you know, start coming when we start in January. It's a very involved thing. But everything is on, you know, on the internet, and you can look up everything that, you know, we've done. And you can look at both the budgets and, you know, go from there. There's a lot of decisions that we're looking at here, a lot of things. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? Has anybody, everybody else spoken before? We let somebody come up again? Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Jonathan Dela Bell. I promise, since I'm speaking twice to this, I won't come up to the next two resolutions that are on the agenda. I guess I'm actually going to take a positive. I always try and see the glass half-full. So I'm going to take a positive out of this conversation that I'm hearing a couple of town council members say that they feel that they've communicated to the school committee that there is a little bit of an intangible to Wakefield School, that it does add vibrancy to Main Street and to downtown, and that that is a piece that they should consider. So I understand that no action's going to be taken on that tonight. But it sounds like maybe if Mr. O'Neill's resolution comes back up at a future meeting, it will get support. And while the town council can't dictate to the school committee what to do, if they do realize that it is part of South Kingstown downtown's economic engine and keeping our tax base healthy, then maybe the school committee will listen to that. So looking at the positive there. Just while we have Representative here, and I appreciate Representative Caprio coming out, two things I would specifically advocate for is to be, there was talk in previous resolution, you know, of the funding formula up at the State House, that some communities would be held harmless. And I realize that that's probably not politically and economically possible. But I would advocate that if there's any way for South Kingstown to be held harmless for just this next year until a collective teachers, collective bargaining agreement comes up, that would be a huge win and allow us to, you know, properly budget for this year. And I think the sooner that we know that, the better our leaders are going to be able to plan. Also, I think that, I don't know what exactly is going to be talked about tomorrow night, but I think one of the proposals, which is closing Curtis Corner and moving the seventh graders, seventh and eighth graders to Broad Rock, we're trying to advocate for some savings by getting away from the expensive team teaching model. And it's come to my attention that that may be presented at tomorrow night's meeting, that the state is actually going to be requiring the team teaching model to be enforced in a couple of years. I don't know all the details of that, and I may be totally off-base. That may not come up. But if that does come up, I would respectfully request to all of our legislators that, from the general assembly, the communities cannot really be dictated to how to run our school systems as they're slashing their contribution. So if this does come out, I hope that our leaders will advocate for us and help plug community members in how to advocate to our legislators. Because if that is the case, that they're telling us that we have to stick with this more expensive model, then there really should be more money coming forward and not less. And just, I'll agree with Mr. Benjamin, that I do think that our town council and school committee needs to do a better job weighing in on state actions. I think that they need to do a better job plugging community members into the process. And I think back to the session where the legislators were here with the school committee and town council last spring, where it was not televised. Community members were not allowed to speak until all the members here, the elected officials here spoke for, you know, three hours or whatever. By that point, a lot of people had to leave because everybody has schedules. So I think that, you know, another person who spoke about courage at the State House, and I won't dispute that, I'll agree with that. But I think there's not always a lot of courage locally. Our leaders need to do a better job advocating to our state leaders, and they need to do a better job of plugging community members into the process. Thank you.
Meeting on May 17th, Jonathan, just in case you want to write that in your book, the legislative meeting with the school committee and the town council, May 17th.
Yeah, I've got that in my book.
Okay.
I was speaking to last spring's meeting.
Okay, May 17th is our next one.
Right.
It will be televised. It will be, well, at least streamlined. That's the new.
Are you being facetious with me?
No. I'm saying we've got the new, that's why I'm looking over here.
Right. But I was speaking, I was speaking about past performance.
I just wanted to bring it up for public so we make sure that the public all knows May 17th.
I appreciate that. And I will just bring up again so that it's a very clear situation that last spring, that there was a session that was held. It was not aired. Community members asked to be able to speak in that meeting, and the town council president said that nobody will be able to speak until our leaders, the school committee was here, the town council was here, our legislators were here. Nobody was able to speak because I guess we aren't important enough. We were not able to speak to our elected officials until they were done with their conversation. And this has been a tactic used. It is a political move. This is a tactic that has been used, running these meetings until 10 o'clock and not letting people speak. So it has happened in the past. It does continue to happen. I'm glad that we're having a televised May 17th meeting.
Streamlined.
But I was talking about last spring.
Okay.
So maybe you're finally catching on. It's encouraging.
Oh, isn't that nice? That's nice.
I just wanted to mention something that Jonathan did say, just so I can comment to it. If you think the education funding formula is going to be expensive to a number of towns, where do you see the middle school formula that might come through? It'll be absolutely unaffordable. And there has been that conversation. I can't believe they're having that conversation when we can't even figure out whether we're going to get our motor vehicle tax when we can't even figure out whether we're gonna get our motor vehicle tax money next quarter, next week. Anyway, sorry, thank you, Kathy.
So, we have a motion, it's been placed on file, it's been moved and seconded, we had discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Dale, can we have a roll call?
Council President Fogarty.
Aye.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Nay.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Next, we move on to communication received April 21st, 2010, from Councilman James O'Neill requesting adoption of a resolution concerning pension reform, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. Okay.
If I may, Kathy, as you know, every year I come forward with, I've been predicting this, David, since you're in the audience, Mr. Caprio, I've been talking about this pension issue for 10 years. I almost could predict to the dime from 10 years ago where we'd be today, and, and what would have said commentary. What I'm so upset about, and I'm glad I see that the Senate has sent this back to you, this nation and this state cannot afford a re-amortization of any portion of any of our, if you will, pension accounts. We've got the teachers, and the states, and ERISA, we've got municipal MERS, it's a 4.3 billion unfunded, the first one, 2 billion unfunded with half the cities and towns, and then another 3 billion unfunded, post-retirement healthcare liability, with the national debt, with what a state, you just, this motion was basically to stop you guys from putting forward any ideas, any plans for re-amortization of any of the unfunded liability. We just, I don't even know if these numbers are right, we, we pick up 50, 75 million dollars over the next few years, but we tack on to our children another 2, 2 and 1/2 billion dollars of debt, we change the length of the debt, you just can't do this. Really, courage, guts, we have got to make decisions here at the state level, and that was the main reason for this argument. And also, too, I, I get picked on a lot, 'cause I'm always, you know, seem to get upset with my school budgets, and I'm not upset with the teachers per se, I think the salaries are maybe not even generous enough, but the pensions and the healthcare issues are a whole nother conversation. But it's just not the, the pensions of the teachers and state workers here, just in the newspaper in the last few days, I just look at a few of these things. Our Central Falls Police Chief retired, aged 47, after 20 years. $43,000 pension, signed on to work the next day at a $72,000 salary, collecting both, $135,000. I wanna puke that this is allowed in this state. That's outrageous, if that is what is reported is correct. And at some point, I'd like to think the public is gonna say, wait a minute, there are all these other areas in, in the, that need pension reform in this state. Let's look at Judge Thompson, who was just promoted to the Boston Appeals Court from Superior Court bench here. She's been on the bench in Rhode Island long enough to collect 75% of her salary, that's $124,000, she's 57 years old, just turned 58, she collects $124,000 immediately, that's not retirement age, and she's collecting a salary of $185,000 from the First Circuit Court. $330,000, when does this stop? When does the average person, when do farmers, fishermen, retail, guys that pump gas, small business people, this makes you wanna vomit, David, this has gotta stop. And I'm, I'm just, when I, I'm speaking to you, I'm speaking to the General Assembly as a whole, this is outrageous, and you are inviting civil unrest. I spoke to the council, I used some statistics out of Washington, U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, that showed the public sector in the Northeast running almost 50% more than the private sector, when salaries, benefits, which mean pension and healthcare, when they're all added together, 50% more. At what point are these people out here, have been so manipulated, and just so, I mean, you know, they think people in the leadership roles are gonna come to their aid at some point, and find some reasonable balance, I know it can't be equitable, but some reasonable balance. This is getting away from this, David, and that's why I don't want a re-amortization to ever see the light of day here. So, that's the reason for that, and I wanted to show that this double dipping is, is just, has got to stop. You choose one job and one salary, and when you're 66 years old, like Social Security, then we'll address that issue, but this has gotta stop. And whose private account gets COLAs? Massachusetts has a $12,000 rule, and we're being generous at 35,000, when the average state worker pension is 25,000, according to recent stats, the average teacher pension's about 43, 44,000, they got 35, why don't you just give away the store? And you wonder why we're going broke? This is serious stuff, and again, I'm not just aiming it at you, I'm just broad-based. I will tell you, I am very pleased to see your brother have the courage and guts to step to the plate with some new plans, this 403B, a combination IRA plan with, oh god, you throw everything in there, a combination contribution from the employee as well as the employer, but then you're on your own to decide your future with that money. And we, we've gotta get to the point here, where defined benefit plans versus defined contribution plans, that's gotta be a major topic of discussion. But this resolution was to stop you guys from re-amortization of any debts, because our children and seniors-to-be cannot afford those numbers. And I'm glad to see the Senate, Senate back to you, I am hoping what I heard with some discussion today, it won't see the light of day, but I'm fearful it will, and I just think that would be the worst move possible by the General Assembly, simply to show that there's no guts, no, nobody with the courageous, you-know-what, to step forward here and say, we can't do this to our citizens, can't do this to our kids, grandkids, and seniors. So, that's the reason that this resolution, resolution came forward, Madam President.
Okay. Polly?
I like this one, Jim.
Oh, geez. Is this on the?
I would, I would only ask you to change a few words.
Oh, oh, no, no, I love my adjectives.
I know you do. Could I move that this be sent to all the other municipal town councils, and every member of the state legislature? And the, the only changes I would like to see is when you say must be, would you change that to should be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hello?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to support this, I think that the re-amortization has been addressed, Jim. And I'm, I'm glad that that happened, I don't wanna see this, you know, on the backs of our children either, so I think that the right decision has been made, and I would prefer to place this on file.
I know, I'm just trying to help with town councils, helping the General Assembly members, get some courage, get some guts, you've got councils behind you, this is a wrong way to go, that, that's all I'm trying to do here.
All right, so is that a motion on your part to place on file?
Well, I'm not sure if, I'm not.
Oh, okay, I didn't know, you wanna change.
But mine wasn't seconded, mine wasn't seconded.
All right, so we got.
Well, I, I was, and I, I approve what Polly said, so I guess I've seconded my resolution that was amended by Polly.
And I thought that was a discussion.
Okay, no, I didn't have a second, so I wasn't quite sure. Okay, so we've got a movement and a second, and so we're in discussion. So, I'm, I'm not gonna support this either, because really, you answered your own question and my concerns about your resolution, Jim. When you talked about the police chief in Central Falls, when you talked about Judge Thomas, when you talked about, it's the directors and the judges who are making these exorbitant amounts of money. If you wanna direct something at what's happening with them, I have no problem with that, even the state police, although there have been some changes with judges in, in the state police. But when you're talking about what you also mentioned, that the average state worker pension is talking about $25,000, and for the municipal employees, you're talking about in the, in the area of like, sometimes in the average of about $14,000. You're hurting the workers, you're hurting the workforce with this. The COLA is, is, is a tough issue, but you know, what you take out of Massachusetts, you have to look, I have to look at all of Massachusetts, you know, pension and what, and what they're doing, not one, one particular component of it. So, I have no problems, I do not, I do not disagree with you with the police chief and what's happening there, and with, with the judges, they are the ones that are killing, killing this pension. But the other employees who've been paying in, who haven't missed their payments, the town employees, our town employees, you know, the state workers who haven't missed, sometimes these, these investment assumptions are, are part of the problem, there's, there's pros and cons to that, too. But again, there've been pension reforms, how many pension reforms have happened in, just in the past few years?
Three since 2005, but there've all been Band-Aid approaches to this, just putting us deeper in a hole.
And, and you're pushing, pushing the age out to 66, there are issues there that need to be taken care of, but I think you hit the nail on the head on really where the main problems are, versus the people who are making 25,000, or the people who are making $14,000 in their pension. That, that is just hurting the people. I mean, let's be fair, when we look at this broad picture of what's going on here, that's why I have a problem with, with it. I'm not saying that things don't need to be changed, but let's not penalize the people who've been taking it on the chin with these past three pension reforms. You know, it gets to a point where we're gonna push this to 66, and then next year, there'll be another resolution to push it to 67, then there'll be 70, and these people won't even be able to retire, take a pension until they're 70 years old. I mean, it, it's unfair for really the true workers in the state of Rhode Island. And, and I feel for them, I, I really do, because it, it, it's tough, it's tough in this economy, and these people depend on, you know, those cost of livings, is it, is it outrageous, when you have those 100,000, 150,000, and you're getting the COLAs on top of it? Absolutely, but for some of these other people, that's what they've been basing their whole retirement on, and what they're gonna, what they're gonna, you know, live on and survive on. It's a lot of, that's a lot of people that you're painting with the big broad brush there. And again, I think it goes back to even some of the assumptions that have happened, so, and I just wanna remind everybody that the town of South Kingstown is, you know, we are pretty close to 100% funded. I just wish all the other towns worked like us, but I, I just can't, I, I can't, I can't see doing it with, with what we're talking about for the real true workers, you know, when, when they go to retire, it's just, it's ugly, it's just ugly for those people. Go after more of the people who are really, really abusing the system, like the ones that you pointed out, I have no problem with that whatsoever. But by the time they've gotten to that point, there's not much we can do to take it away from them, I guess.
And, and Kathy, the reason that I brought up the averages, about 80, 85% of the workers in the state are privately employed, you can't find any of them that frankly have a $25,000 pension with COLA. None of them have that. They would dream of having that, let alone a $45,000 number with teachers. The average worker, let's take away the doctors and the big CEOs, and you come down to the average salary out there, and that's why I gave you the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, they have nothing in retirement compared with the public sector. And that's why these COLAs, that's why a balance, that's why equity has got to return to those that are getting it all, and those that have nothing, and, and the folks that have nothing out here. We deal with these people, they're downtown, they're everywhere, they've got nothing, if they've got 25 or 50,000 in a pension account, or an IRA, they're lucky. If they earn 2% or 3% return on that, they get a couple thousand dollars a year. While they're looking at the state workers at 25, teachers at 45, it's just out of balance, is where this is, it is out of balance. But you're absolutely right, and, I mean, I, I have more examples I couldn't even bring up tonight, I mean, just.
It makes you, it makes you nauseous, I agree with you, it does. But again, you're hurting the little person, too, and there's a lot more of them that get hurt, in, in the, in the big picture.
I know, but it's the little people who mostly are paying the bills, who don't have anything.
Well, we have, we have a motion, and Polly wanted some changes on it, so I guess we have a vote on that?
What happens if it's two, two? It passes.
I, I seconded Polly's amended motion to mine.
I, I don't know what Polly's amendments were, I couldn't.
She wanted some changes in the verbiage.
Language change.
I asked that the word must be, should be changed, should be. Should take greater.
Right, should, and the other, the other change was that.
There are three of those.
In addition to every municipality, to send it to the General Assembly, delegates.
And to the other municipa, municipalities, and the General Assembly.
To, to, to the municipal town councils and the General Assembly.
She's got them now.
Okay.
All right, can we have a, so, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Do you wanna take a roll call on that?
Council President Fogarty.
Nay.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails, so we just move on to the, the next item.
Does that have authority for discussion on any of the items?
Well, we just voted on it, so, see you, Dave.
No, let him.
Oh, it, can I let him talk after we voted on an item? I, I legally haven't.
Sure, if nothing more, it could be public comment. It's not gonna affect your vote, because the vote is over.
Okay, the vote is over, but you can go ahead, just wanna make sure I'm legally doing what I have to.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
And I, I guess, and my intention was not to try to affect your vote on it, anyway.
Okay.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman O'Neill, and perhaps one of the, one, one bright spot of this crisis, I guess, is that it educates Rhode Islanders as to what the real numbers are, and what, what actually the problem is, and, and the shortfalls of the pension. Pensions are very complicated, the formulas can be, you know, quite complicated at times. But the fact of the matter is, as we, as we stand here today, the pension system as it exists is just not sustainable. The people of Rhode Island can't afford it as it stands today. And that's the real, that's the reality that we're dealing with. And, you know, in the legislature, you know, it, it is actually quite surprising that some would say that there's a lack of courage there to do things. When you speak to the pension, we've made significant changes in the, in the most recent years. People who have worked for the state, or teachers throughout our state who have worked for decades, some of whom may have had opportunities in the private sector to leave, some of who have, may have had opportunities to, to change their profession or change their career, had chosen not to do so, based upon pretty much the word of the state of Rhode Island, that they had been paying into a system for decades, decades, relying upon a benefit that when they first started teaching, decades ago, their pay wasn't what it is today, some of the benefits isn't, aren't what they are today, but those were negotiated at the local level, those weren't given to anybody by the state. All of the pay and the, and the benefits that, that the teachers get are negotiated at the local level. So, by the time they worked for several decades, and perhaps gave up opportunities in their own life, and, and the major reason for some of those decisions may have been the word of the state of Rhode Island. The word that, what was promised to these people, promised to, to the workers and the people we entrust our children's education to, was a pension that had been, had really never been challenged to the extent that it's being challenged today. And it takes courage to look at that person and tell them, we're gonna change the deal on you. It takes a lot of courage. Takes courage for someone to come into your office and say they've been working for, for the state, or working as a teacher with our children for 20 years, and now, and they had, and they had planned their financial future responsibly, based upon the word of the state of Rhode Island. And they look at us and they say, you're gonna change that on us now, which we did last year. People who have been working for 20 years, or 23 or 25 years, who, who their retirement was, the end of the tunnel was right, the light at the end of the tunnel was in front of them, they had plans to move on with their lives. We changed the deal, and we told them they had to work longer, and they couldn't collect their pension until later. We've done that. That takes courage. And in other areas, we chose in the recent past not to change other things. And that takes courage to look at people like Councilman O'Neill, and many of our other constituents, who look at us and say, what about us, we're paying this bill. Takes courage to look at them and say, well, you know, the state of Rhode Island has given its word for, for multiple decades of the current workers, and hundreds of years before them. Well, actually, the pension system didn't, not so, that's hundreds of years, but, you know, coming up on 100 years, 70, 80 years. But the reality is, we just can't afford it. You know it, we know it. The people who are working today in this, in the, you know, that are, that have been contributing to the pension, they know it. And the taxpayers know it. The, the question and answer section in today's Providence Journal regarding some of the facts with the pension was a fantastic lesson in what the pension does, what it doesn't do, and where the problems lie. And again, we're looking at pension changes. It's not fair. It's not fair to the taxpayers to look to, look to them and say, you're going to be on the hook an extra 200, 300 million dollars as the years go on, and in 20 years, an extra 700 or 800 million dollars if we keep the pension system as it is. hundred million dollars if we keep the pension system as it is." That's not fair. It's not fair to the person who's been working for the state or who's been a teacher, again, teaching our children, who's been working for fifteen or twenty or twenty-five years, and say, "You know something? You can't retire now for another ten years. And when you do retire, what we told you you were going to get for the first twenty years of your employment, you're not going to get. Actually, you're not going to get a hundred percent of it. You're not going to get ninety percent of it. You're lucky if you get sixty or seventy percent of what you thought you were going to get. Oh, and by the way, that cost of living increase for the state worker that might be retiring, the average state worker, like you said, Councilman, on their, their average pension, that cost of living increase, so that in ten or fifteen years, you're not living below the poverty level? We can't afford that either. So, we're going to take that away." That takes courage to even consider doing that to people. Consider doing that to lifelong Rhode Islanders who have put their entire professional life in the service of the people of Rhode Island and teaching our children. But those are the, those are the decisions that we're facing in the State House. And they're not easy. And they're real. And they hit people at home where it hurts. They hit the, they hit the employees, they hit the teachers, and they hit the taxpayers. So, if there was a magic wand we could wave and say, "Let's just do this magic bullet. Shoot this silver bullet down the middle of the State House and solve all of our pension problems, and the taxpayers will be made whole, and the workers will have a fair pension, and everybody can go home feeling like, you know, nobody's been affected that well." Boy, we would have shot that bullet a long time ago. But there is no magic bullet. And you call them Band-Aids, Councilman O'Neill, with all due respect, but they're not Band-Aids. They're not Band-Aids. They're structural changes to a system that needed to be changed. How far do we go each year? How far can we go? We try to go far enough to make a big enough difference so that we, so that we're fair to the taxpayers, yet fair to the people who have dedicated their lives serving and working for the state of Rhode Island and teaching our children. Well, we have to go farther because we just can't afford it. And the refinancing was one option that was put before us. Controversial it is. Some states refinance every year. Some pension systems refinance or rolling refinancing every year. You know, and there's a lot of factors that go into these decisions. Should the COLA be, should there be no COLA? Should it be on the first twelve thousand like Massachusetts? Should it be on thirty-five thousand? It all comes down to seeing what can make this system sustainable. Because if it's not affordable and, if it's not affordable and sustainable for the taxpayer, it's not certain for the person who's dedicated their lives working to earn it, to receive anything. And our job is to ensure that there is a pension, not only for the people who are going to be ready to retire tomorrow, but for the people who are going to start working, start working tomorrow. And if we leave it alone, there won't be one. So, those are the decisions we make. Those are the courageous options and decisions that face us on a daily basis. And I, you know, we can use this forum for political speeches if we want, and I would hope that people don't. But when you, you know, when you direct your comments to the legislature through me, Councilman O'Neill, I feel as though I have to respond. And, you know, I've been called a lot of things as a state representative, but I can't recall someone, I can't recall anybody challenging my courage. For my first days when I challenged the most powerful person in our generation in this entire state, challenged him on the merits of decisions that were being made at the State House, and actually, part of our constitution was changed because of it with separation of powers. So, we're up there every, every day, every day, Madam President, fighting for our districts. I fight for South Kingston and Narragansett as other representatives fight for their own districts. That's what we do. And this, and, you know, we're going to see a lot of debate on this pension coming in the next few months. There's going to be a lot of plans floated before you. And I just ask that you try to understand, as much as we have to be responsible to the taxpayers who ultimately pay for the pension, we also have to be fair for those who have worked and earned it. I don't know if that would have changed any of your votes on that. Probably not, but thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Unfortunately, I don't think you have a clue about the disparity between the private sector and the public sector. I'm not doubting you. There are incredible number of loyal employees. Retirement means old. It doesn't mean double dipping. And if you went back to the seventies and eighties, this plan originally had folks had to work thirty-eight years, forty years. And all the benefits from the seventies and eighties and nineties all worked towards the employees, but we didn't fund it.
With all due respect, Councilman-
You gave it away.
With all due respect-
And you're doing nothing about it. It's nice to hear this oratory that I'm hearing from you, but let's see action. I want to see in the newspaper. Let's see what we're going to do here. But the private sector, you're not supporting.
With all due respect, Councilman, we are paying today for the sins of the past, for excessive pensions and, and excess, and pension changes that happened twenty or thirty years ago. I can't dispute that. That doesn't change, that doesn't change the fact that it's, in a lot of ways, we're agreeing with each other. It's not affordable. It's not.
Can we file Chapter Nine?
But that doesn't mean that we necessarily pull the rug out-
No.
-from everybody who works for the state and our teachers. There's a balance.
Can we file Chapter Nine and turn our pension system over to Washington?
I'm sorry?
Can we file Chapter Nine as a state? Can cities and towns put the state into bankruptcy?
The state can. Only municipality can with the state's permission.
With the state's permission, okay.
Well, Central Falls, I guess, is-
Well, they're asking.
Is asking, right?
They've granted that they're asking.
I think the one important thing you just brought up was today's article, which was really almost a hundred percent on the money. The important paragraph in there, and I didn't bring it with me, was the amount of outgoing versus the money coming in.
That's correct.
Hundreds of millions of dollars annually. Frightening. If that doesn't frighten folks, I don't know what does. And I don't care who it is. It's the whole dynamic. It's the entire pension system.
And I agree with that. And, Councilman, that's why, as I said, the pension issue this year, it's a, it's a, you know, it's an election year. And that brings out a lot of time, that brings a lot of things to the forefront that might not necessarily be in the forefront in other years. Not only is it an election year for you and I, it's an election year on the statewide level.
But I've honestly done this every year for ten years. I mean, I've brought this forward for ten years.
With all due respect, you've done this for ten years, and we've made substantial changes in the last five. So, I mean, you said you could have predicted it ten years ago. You would have been pretty good if you could have predicted the changes we've made over the last three or four years. You mentioned my brother's plan. It's a good plan. I'm not going to get into the details of it.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's not get into the details.
But you're going to see many, many other plans coming forward.
You know, we're meeting on the seventeenth, and I think that we can go back and forth on this, and the other legislators will be there to get you back.
That's fine. Thank you, Madam President.
So, why don't we, you know, continue this on the seventeenth? Because we could go on forever, but it's actually seven past eleven right now, and I've been asked for a small-
For the State House, this, we're just getting started around this time.
I know. A small bio break from one of the council members, and I can't disagree with that, so.
If I could just respond to one sure thing, when you, I, I, I'm sorry, Councilman, but I take umbrage to the fact when you tell me I don't have a clue what happens in the private sector. We do. We do. We hear that side too.
Okay.
We do. And there's risk and reward. And for the person who's making twenty thousand dollars a year working for the state, you know what they say about the private sector? They have unlimited potential and unlimited earning capability. So, it's a risk and reward. We have, believe me when I tell you, we hear both sides of the story. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Madam President.
We're going to take a little bio break for five minutes here, if you don't mind. Well, oh, Polly, can you?
Can't stop here. Go ahead.
Okay. Polly, quickly.
Go ahead.
Sorry. One of the troubles with Streamlin. We haven't gone this late. Wait, do we need a motion to continue after eleven?
Yes.
Is there, what is the council?
It's on the agenda.
Done.
When they come back, make the motion.
Okay. The FEMA people, they have questions, and I don't know.
Oh, they were standing.
I don't know. No, no, I don't think they are.
Oh, leak. Don't let them take their boxes of paperwork, though.
No, people are digging in. That's good.
What, are you growing a beard?
I may first the motor vehicle excise tax has got to be paid out to the towns, and a lot of towns are waiting for that to- No, but I mean, I really keep getting into it right now, but I just, you know, I know the towns are waiting for that to happen. So, I mean, that's, you know. This week, we know, you took all of it or full or back some of it? I didn't know. Is that Saturday? So, okay, well, Polly's back, so I'm going to enroll here. We're going to have a motion to continue. All right, we're going to-
It could have seen you, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
We have to make a motion to continue past-
I do have a article from Illinois.
Jim, we're still in session here, Jim.
Ten and a half billion dollars. It's costing them two-hundred extra million a year.
Jim, we're going to move on here.
Okay, we've got to move on.
We've got to, we've got to go here.
I'll save it for you.
I need a motion.
I move that we continue past eleven. Is it seconded?
Second.
Do seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We move on. Okay, we are moving on to communication, item O. A communication received April twenty-first, twenty-ten from Councilman James O'Neill requesting adoption of a resolution concerning reconfiguration of the middle schools received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. It is the council's pleasure in this item.
Jim, I don't know if you want to speak to it or you want me to speak?
Oh, yeah, Jim, you can go. I'm sorry.
I guess, again, I'm trying to interfere with the school committee's business.
I'm sorry.
I'm just concerned that after ten years with a twenty-one percent decrease in student population, that our school budget does not reflect that in any shape, manner, or form. Also, too, NESDEC, I've got to tell you, NESDEC has been almost on the money with births and school population from, what, two thousand, two thousand and one on. And their population predictions, which have been very accurate, show that the, under the sixth grade populations to lessen and lessen to the point where we don't need Curtis Corner School open. I don't think we have to keep the school open. I think assets can be better preserved if we could try to lease it to another facility, but to load it up with personnel, given the twenty-one percent drop in population, I think is absurd. And my concern is that the school committee is, again, trying to use as much space as possible for the amount of children. And I think we're facing a decade, at least a decade, just to stabilize Rhode Island and South Kingston's economic position and financial position. And we just don't have the luxury of spending money like we have over the previous ten years, specifically with the staffing costs when Broad Rock School was open. So, the reason for this is, I think NESDEC was on the, right on the money. Populations under the sixth grade are lessening as we go down to kindergarten, and I think Curtis Corner is absolutely a candidate to close. Dr. Hicks last year did say that it could be a candidate to close. Operationally, it was the most expensive with just the heating, cooling, just the size of the place. And so, I think that's, again, a reminder to the school committee that I think this makes sense. NESDEC's population predictions make sense, and I think the taxpayers have, really need some relief here to have a school budget that represents the twenty-one percent decrease of school populations over the last ten years. Thank you.
Anybody on the council, Polly?
Yes, I'll move that we place it on file. And again, my reason is the same. I think that the school budget should be controlled by the school, and I think they make the decisions, and I think they do it with our children's education in mind. And I would place this on file.
Second.
So, do seconded. Any further discussion, Ella?
Just to reiterate your words, Jim, you know, and they're your words, interfering with school business, but you've done it threefold. You've asked that they close the school, reopen a school, as well as reconfigure the middle school model. So, I definitely think that's under the auspices of the school committee, not the town council.
And I'll also just, I'll second exactly, well, I concur exactly what you're saying, Ella, on all three points. And that this was, the middle school model that we had was a community-driven choice from the town. And people have gone on and on about how wonderful the schools are, and they certainly are. And our test scores in the middle school have been great, and so have they in the elementary school. We always think that we need work in the high school, but I think it's because of that middle school model. And I'm, again, I'm not an expert on it. That's the school committee's, and they've got the data to back it up. So, I'm going to let the school committee make the decision on that one, so.
And my only debate with that, Kathy, is I believe that the, that the public at large really didn't have an idea of the expense of the Broad Rock School opening, what they called a strategic plan. I've heard it called a policy change. It just wasn't spelled out numerically with the staffing costs, which were incredible, are incredible, and are still living with us, especially from those early days when we had budget done. When we opened the school, that year's budget was seventeen percent, followed by three or four, eight and a half, nine percents. You just can't recover from that, yet our population has dropped twenty-one percent. So, that's why I think things are out of balance.
Does this give you ammunition to put a referendum into cut, then, for the decreasing student population? That's what you've based it on in the past. I was wondering about that.
I will be fair with you. I will take a serious look at that tomorrow night. We'll make my decision for me.
Okay, good to know. Is there any further discussion?
My name's Justin Galant, and I'm just asking, and I think, I know how this is going to go anyways, but I'm asking the town council to, to actually probably not even table this, but I mean, I think tabling is fine. Jim, I, you know, again, I appreciate maybe what you're trying to do at times, but, you know, again, I don't, I mean, I don't think you're saying a whole lot. I mean, you're saying things that you want to tell the school committee what to do. And I think I'm going to agree with the other town council members that, that that's probably the wrong way to go. I appreciate that you want to keep the Wakefield Elementary School open. I see that in your first letter, but again, you know, that was probably jumping the gun a little bit. This, I feel like where you talk about the financial times have changed, taxpayers are being squeezed, everybody, I feel like you're starting to do a little bit of a political statement in there and trying to bring that up a little and bring politics into it again. And I think for the town council to vote on a resolution, I don't think that's appropriate. And overall, you know, again, I don't, I don't, personally, I don't feel like you're saying a whole lot in this resolution, so I hope that the town council votes no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody else?
Jonathan Daly-Labelle, and I apologize, I'm going back on what I said earlier, but I just wanted to really bring forward more a point of clarification that in the past, what the community supported was having the two, six, seven, eight middle schools. So, that's really kind of what the record would show. And the school committee made a choice last year to start to dismantle that popular aspect of our school program. So, as they have done that, I'm not sure that the, I don't know that we know where the community stands on this current configuration, but the past record is that the six, seven, eight schools were popular. The school committee is now abandoning that. And I think that with that now opening up the conversation, there is kind of a growing movement in the community that maybe going back to a K- to six style model would work much better for our community's children, as long as we're already moving away from the system that had been in place. So, I just wanted to offer that as a point of clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jim, are you gonna go?
No, no, I'll, I'll, Mr. Galant's-
Anybody else before Mr. Galant goes, because again, all right, just in a-
I, I just wanna clarify, I, I think the, the late hour is getting to me, I, I want you to vote yes to table this, I, I don't want you, I-
I, I think I got that.
You think you understood what I meant? Okay, thank you very much.
It's late, I understand. Okay. It's been moved, it's, oh, Jim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, yeah, Jonathan is correct, um, uh, the, um, school committee did move this year, I didn't, I suppose you could call it dismantling, but, um, uh, sixth graders in one school, seventh, eighth in, in the other, that's why I recommended that South Road be open for six, 'cause Curtis Corner was so monstrous, it's very expensive versus South Road to keel, keep open, this is not politics, I've been watching the bottom line for ten years, ten years, getting beaten up by everybody imaginable, um, but I've always spoken the truth, the figures I use are from the school department, not even from town council or town manager, school department numbers, what I use. Nezdeck, you can read the reports, has been on the money, absolutely on the money, this tells you we've got room to close Curtis Corner and move a sixth grade to South Road and seventh, eighth to Broad Rock, seven, eight will be tight and Broad Rock be tight for two years, and then it really loosens up after that on a capacity basis, so I have been preaching that for years, at least the last couple of years, uh, that, but the dynamic is, we have so many reductions of potential money coming our way, we've gotta look at what's obvious, and these were the experts that were hired by the school committee, and I'm just simply following up with the numbers that I see there, so. Anyway, Jonathan is right, uh, the, um, is it a dismantling? I don't know, we could still do middle school modeling with seventh and eighth graders, may, maybe do a hybrid in the ninth or seventh and eighth, there are ways to get around this, but I hate to get to a situation next year where we may have to look at closing more than one school possibly, or we're really going to have to look at every program, and I don't wanna get to that point, but if we're not careful and we don't be smart here, at some point, how can you explain to the taxpayers that here was an opportunity, this made sense, and we're not taking advantage of it? And I get a lot of those calls, believe me, awful lot of those calls.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
One last thing, I'll keep that, I promise. And that's only to respond back, Jim, the only reason I'm saying I thought it was a political thing, I think it's your, your extraordinary use of adjectives at times-
Thank you.
-that brings it, you know, makes it appear as though it's a political statement, so.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm guilty of, yes, power adjectives.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Dale?
Council President Fogarty.
Aye.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Nay.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to one. Okay, next is comments from interested citizens, anybody who's left?
Where are we?
Yeah, comments eight, number eight, page five, there's a lot to go.
Uh, Jonathan Daley-Labelle again, um, I just wanted to hand something on, I've actually, I have two, two things I wanted to hand to you, one, I thought I had in my bag, but I don't, um, but I, if I can, uh-
To the town clerk.
Okay. Do you mind if I put that to you and see, see this?
She'll hand it out to us.
Uh, the piece that I forgot, well, the piece that I'm handing to you is, um, the Sari Sanctuary, the River Classroom in action, and there's been a lot of talk, um, Twenty-First Century Learning, and I still really haven't heard anybody define that, um, but I'm hoping, um, that as you look at that picture of, with a teacher and, um, you know, so I guess in a way, some team teaching, fifth graders and second graders, um, I think that it puts that classroom in context, I think that if that's been, that piece of this has been, um, you know, kind of minimized, and, you know, it's, as being kinda just a platform on the river, but I think when you look at that photo, um, with the students learning, being instructed, um, I think there is a lot of value there. Um, the piece that I forgot is, uh, the invitation, um, that I would like to give to, um, elected officials and administrators, and I'll bring, uh, tomorrow night, um, you know, to the other board in town, the dedication of Sari Sanctuary is, uh, this Sunday, um, actually, I don't know if that's May two, May three?
It's May third, it's May at three o'clock, we already received it and filed this last week.
Oh, thank you, thank you, okay, so, May third, I hope that you'll be able to attend, um, I guess that the forecast is supposed to be a beautiful day, and, um, you know, that, that's what I've heard, so, I, I, I do hope that you'll attend and see what that's all about, um, I think that's another piece, um, that the town council does have, um, some say in, um, as well, you know, the Main Street piece is important, uh, this River Classroom, Sari Sanctuary, because there was a lot of money raised, uh, private money, there was an auction, a lot of citizens raised money for that, I'm not sure if there was any government money that, that came in, um, into play at all, um, I do believe that the town was, um, very active in, uh, the construction of that, overseeing that and permitting, and, you know, I don't know if somebody here could maybe speak to that better than I, or, or whatever, um, but it wasn't, it was good teamwork, um, a lot of private money, I go to Saint Francis Church, the church also, uh, there was a collection that went around, so there was, um, citizen support for that, um, you know, through the church as well, um, and I think that the town more or less said to the community that, yes, you know, build that River Classroom, there's a school here, and that's what's there, and that's what will be there, so I think that's another piece that the town needs to consider, um, that they really backed this project, and I don't think that it would be proper, uh, to especially close the school where that new River Classroom is just gonna be dedicated, uh, you know, to close it four months later, um, so that's another piece I think the town does have on its shoulders, and I, hopefully, they will, uh, help carry that responsibility and, and let the school committee know, uh, that the town did make a promise to the community, and, uh, that the town wants to keep its promises. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Bob.
Bob, looking at you, I'm like, go ahead, Bob, but please state your name for the record.
I'd just like to say goodnight.
Oh, Bob Trager is signing out.
I'm getting tired, but I'm very glad I came, I haven't been here in a while, it was quite an interesting meeting, and I'll be back.
All right.
Bye, have a good evening.
Yeah, bye, Bob, thank you.
See you at the beach.
All right, anybody else from the public, go ahead, now, Jim, I think that's the public comment, yeah.
Thank you, Teresa Tansey, um, I spoke a little bit about it before, but I didn't wanna go into great detail about, um, the three tiers, um, I am a, a member of the Broad Rock Community Garden Board, and, um, you know, we reserved two plots specifically for the school there, and it dawned on me, um, kind of what was going on in the community when we spoke about what those plots would be, and to us, you know, the five or six of us that were sitting around, um, there was very little opportunity for us to plant a garden that was gonna be fruitful and provide something for the school community, just the way the growing season is, and the vision that we as board members had of what it would mean to have the garden at a school, um, was completely changed, it's, it's great that the town gave us that land, it's wonderful, but it's not providing the full benefit that we anticipated, and I have to say, I'm speaking only as an individual who happens to be on the board, um, and not representing the entire board, but it is, it, it's, it's a disappointment to see the sixth graders alone in that school by themselves, um, I, it's hard for me to see that as a community, and then to think about the PTO members, how do you get an active group of parents to be involved when they're there for one year? How do you get a group of parents to become active when they have children in maybe two or three other tiers of school, when their child will only be there for one year? Um, I don't claim to have the answers when it comes to school reconfiguration, but in my opinion, if consolidation needs to happen, if we need to close a school, I think we need to have it be in the way that best serves the whole of the community, and as a recent appointee to the Economic Development Committee, I've been attending Narragansett's, um, meetings as well, and attending the South Kingstown ones, and again, not as, um, uh, representation, you know, representing the board, but my observations and having attended all of these things, Wakefield Elementary School is a very big part of what makes Wakefield, um, to me, it, it would diminish the value of our Main Street, and, um, I, I just, I would really urge, um, and I know this isn't something that you all have, uh, ability to control, but I, I think it's so important for us to look at this holistically, and if consolidation needs to happen, um, I would advocate for a three-tier system that preserves our community, um, in, in the best way possible, so, thank you.
Also being sponsored by the Chamber, um, I believe tickets are twenty-five dollars for adults and five dollars for children, and that's gonna be at Amal fees, and I believe that's two-thirty and five-thirty, so, town's having a very busy day. Two other things that I just wanted to mention, Kath, is, um, the South County Hospital had their race, and, um, my family participated, and it was just absolutely a wonderful, wonderful, um, you know, community activity, um, and then the other thing that I attended was the Women's Resource Center honored five men and our-
Resolution authorizing an extension of an award of bid originally granted on June twenty-third, two thousand and eight to Harrington Engineering Incorporated, P.O. Box eight-one-nine, Old Sabre, Connecticut, for services contracted for H.V.A.C. maintenance at the Public Safety Complex for a period of July first, twenty-ten, through July thirtieth, twenty-eleven, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the bid specifications at the following rates, for the regular P.M. priority service, seventy-seven dollars an hour, emergency service, a hundred and eight per hour, mock-up parts and materials, over cost twenty percent, and is further describing the memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated April fourteenth, entitled Recommendation for Contract Extension, H.A.V.
Recommendation to extend the existing contract for another year.
Okay, thanks, motion?
Motion to approve, new business item A.
Second.
We moved it seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, everybody's gonna be cool over there, all right, and heated. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to indispensable custom woodworking, six Spring Cove Road in Narragansett for furniture for the Peasdale Library in accordance with the bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, including a contingency, is further describing the memorandum from the library director, the town manager, April nineteenth, twenty-ten. Dean?
Champlin Foundation Grant, recommendation is for the low bid, this will update and reconfigure the, uh, current circulation area at the Peasdale Library.
Okay.
I move approval of new business item B.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes, Champlin again.
Yeah, oh, thank God for them.
Step into the plate, library, I mean, just-
Yeah, always for the libraries.
Always.
For a lot of things.
Just can't thank them enough.
I agree with you on that one, Jim, that'll agree with Jim. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atlas Pyrovision Productions, P.O. Box four-ninety-eight, Jaffe, New Hampshire, for the twenty-ten, Fourth of July fireworks display in accordance with all bidding specifications, in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, is further describing the memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services on April nineteenth.
Boom.
Atlas is the, uh, is the vendor of record for the last fourteen of the last fifteen years, uh, recommendation is to award, the eighteen thousand dollars is what's been budgeted for that purpose.
Motion?
Motion to approve, new business item C.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is E, a new business E, a resolution adopting the town beach policy for the twenty-ten season, is shown in exhibit one attached here too, and amending the town's schedule of fees, is further describing the memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the town manager April twentieth.
Beach policy is unchanged from the prior year.
Thank goodness.
I move approval of new business item A.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing, oh, Jim.
Steve, but State of Rhode Island hasn't asked South Kingstown to consider taking over purchasing East Mattoonik State Beach, have they?
No, they have not.
They're looking for money, of course, we don't have any, but-
I was gonna say, we can't swing that one.
No, or in Jerusalem, though, where Narragansett meets South Kingstown with the D.E.M. piece there, is there any further word on that, just while we're on beaches here?
We receive the revenue from the beach, uh, there, there's a proportion of it that comes back to the town, it comes in as a miscellaneous revenue, from East Mattoonik State Beach.
Well, I'm sorry, I meant in Jerusalem, where Narragansett, Sukkaddash Road, then it becomes South Kingstown again, if we've had any word from D.E.M. what they're gonna do with that particular small beach parking area?
I have not had any inquiries from D.E.M. on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry, Kathy.
Okay, no, no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, for, uh, F is a resolution granting approval to the American Tower Corporation Outdoor D.A.S.L.L.C., Ten Presidential Way, Woburn, Mass., to install distributed antenna systems technology on existing telephone poles, and the town of South Kingstown is detailed in the development plan review, approval granted March twenty-fourth, twenty-ten by the Technical Review Committee, incorporating by reference the committee's finding of fact and conditions of approval, and is further describing the memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated April twenty-first.
American Tower Corporation is requesting approval to, uh, site on six, uh, different, uh, utility poles in the town, two on Old North Road, uh, three on Stony Fort, and one on Aspen Road, uh, this will provide, uh, uh, service, uh, where there's coverage gaps for the existing cellular communications network, uh, recommendation is to approve as presented.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, new business item F.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is G, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Comer Contracting Incorporated, eleven-twelve Farmington Avenue, Farmington, Connecticut, for three-eight stone ceiling with post-sweeping at a unit price bid of one dollar seven-four-nine per square yard, in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-seventy thousand for the oh-nine, oh-ten, and for one-hundred-and-seventy thousand for the ten-eleven, total cost based on pre-measured quantities, and is further describing the memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager dated April twentieth, twenty-ten.
The recommendation on both items, G and H, for the, uh, Seal Crack, uh, program, uh, both, uh, recommendations are for award as presented to the lowest qualified bidder for both, uh, we'll be spending about, uh, three-hundred and, uh, three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars on stone seal, and approximately, uh, uh, seventy thousand dollars on, uh, crack seal, this will be a combination for the, uh, nine-ten year and ten-eleven year, for both crack sealing program and for the stone sealing program.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve both of them together?
I move approval of new business items G and H.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, the meeting is adjourned.